Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for waiting patiently. The City Council is reconvening from our closed session. There's nothing to report and want to adjourn that meeting at 6:29 PM. I'll call the regular City Council meeting to order on Wednesday, November the 14th, at 6:29 PM. And I'd like to request the City Clerk to read the Metro Replace schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting in the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, November 16th, at 1:00 PM, and Sunday, November 18th, at 8:00 PM. It is being closed captioned; it will be webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the room, and provide it to the Assistant City Clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
Excellent. If you could roll call, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Detrick is absent. Councilmember Hume?
Here.
Vice Mayor Seun.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
I am here. Next item is Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite Mr. Guccatinder Randawa, who is a member of our Multicultural Committee, to lead us in the pledge, please, sir. Come on up. Right. Thank you very much. At the beginning of every regular City Council meeting, the City Council would like to invite members of the public to join us at a moment of silence.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask that we keep all the folks to the north of us that are out everything right now due to the campfire and just hope that they are able to land on their feet.
Thank you, Councilman Hume. And if you could join us, please. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Take us to Section 2, Approval of the Agenda.
Okay, we have an agenda in front of us. We've got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstention. All right, next item.
We have no items under Section 3 of the Closed Session, which will take us to Section 4, Presentations and Announcements, starting with Item 4.1, which is a presentation of a certificate of recognition to Jeff Garrett for his courage, assistance, and lifesaving efforts.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Where's Jeff this evening?
There you are. Come on down, sir. Oh, thank you. And I want to invite the rest of the Council to come down. I think this is a moment that is worthy of all of us to honor what you've done for the community. You know, I am proud to represent a city that has residents like Jeff Garrett here. You know, I know you said in a recent paper that you just did what anybody would do, but it still goes not unnoticed that what it takes to wake up groggy-eyed, finding people at risk, car on fire, and to put yourself in harm's way to save three lives. So we really appreciate what you've done. I want to recognize you. I know our Police Department and Fire Department recognized you a while back, but we wanted our turn to do the same. So, thank you so much for all you've done. Thank you.
I'm honored. Thank you.
One more. Thank you.
I'm really honored, Jeff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I appreciate that, City Council. I can't tell you how honored I am that the recognition I've received from the City Police Department, the Fire Department. I'm most pleased that the victims that crashed were okay, and I've been following along with the police in the city right now, and I just can't believe how positive our departments are, and I'm just extremely proud to live here and honored by the recognition you guys have given me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jeff, I'd like to make one additional comment. I wasn't here when they first came out, so I wanted to... Personally, when I saw this story, I was so touched because most people watch what's going to happen or call 911, but you jumped into action, and what you did is just unbelievable, putting yourself in harm's way. And I'm so proud of you and what an example you are to every man, woman, and child in this city for jumping into action. So I can't thank you enough.
Thank you. My pleasure. Thank you. The other thing I might want to add is, like a true hero, not much words, and, you know, we truly appreciate what you do, and, you know, hopefully some of the young people will look to you as an example of what it means to be a citizen of Elk Grove. So thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate it. All right, next item.
Take us to Item 4.2, which is a proclamation declaring November 2018 as Seek American Awareness and Appreciation Month.
Okay. The City Council has a resolution presenting to the Sikh community, and it reads as such: "The City of Elk Grove in the State of California and our great nation are enriched by the unparalleled diversity of our residents, and Sikhism is the fifth-largest religion in the world, and today there are more than 25 million Sikhs worldwide, as an estimated 250,000 Americans of Sikh origin, comprising nearly 40% of the nation's estimated Sikh population residing in California alone. And Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and walks of life, making rich contributions to the social and cultural, economic vibrancy of the United States and the state of California and the city of Elk Grove, including significant contributions in the areas of agriculture, trucking, medicine, technology, as well as serving as members of the United States Armed Forces, members of Congress, mayors, judges, and have distinguished themselves by fostering greater respect among all people through their faith in service. And today, the City of Elk Grove seeks to recognize the diversity of its community and afford all residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and shared experiences of Sikh Americans. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims November 2018 as Seek American Awareness and Appreciation Month in the City of Elk Grove as a way to celebrate the significant contributions made by Californians of Sikh heritage to our community." So I'd like to invite Mr. Randawa, trustee Bobby Singh, to come on up. And is there another individual that you wanted to come on up as well? And I'd like to also invite the entire City Council to present this resolution to these three members.
[inaudible]
All right. Make sure you guys can see the camera.
Sorry, sir. Thank you.
[laughing]
I'll do too. All right.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, there we go.
All right.
Okay, guys, look spread. One, two, three. One more, and many more.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Hello. Hello. Good evening. My name is Vikramji Singh. I am head priest from the Barsha Sikh Temple.
Just go back a little bit so that we can hear you. You're too close to mine.
Hello. My name is Vikramji Singh. I am head priest from the Barsha Sikh Temple. Thank you for the recognition, for the Sikh awareness, and the appreciation month. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Thank you so much.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. First of all, congratulations, Mayor Lee, and Councilwoman Stephanie Nguyen, and Councilmember Pat Hume, wishing you good luck and Godspeed in your next term. For the record, my name is Bobby Singh Allen. I'm a trustee with the Elk Grove Unified School District. I am also a proud Sikh American, and I want to thank all of you for this recognition for Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month. It is an important opportunity for the city. We did the similar resolution in our school district. It is a recognition and a reinvestment back in the community so that the diverse residents that live here can have a greater understanding of who we are, who our neighbors are. Sikh Americans have lived in California for over 100 years, and it's not something that everybody readily knows, that, you know, we are a vibrant, active members of this great community and this great state. I encourage you to send the copy of your resolution to your staff because a part of this is also educating back. So while we love the recognition for our respective community, but it's also a teachable moment. So if you can share that with your staff so that the whereas that Mayor Lee read, there are some important facts within that statement. And so I think it's really important, the more we can educate our community, the better we will be served. You know, Sikhism is the fifth-largest religion, but we believe in something called Sarbatapala, welfare, and to all, our prayers end with that. And so we recognize and celebrate all faiths and all communities, and we wish everybody good wishes and well-being in all of our prayers. So we wish that for all of you, for continued leadership and service in our community. And then I do want to turn it over to some of my other community leaders that are here with us this evening. It is great to see the City of Elk Grove, which is rich in diversity, recognizing its great residents, hoping that other cities also follow suit because education is the key to so much ignorance that is out there. I can't leave without saying, we still have two Sikh elders that were gunned down several years ago. We still have those unsolved murders, and a lot of us believe those to be as a result of hate crimes. And at the heart of hate crime or hate is ignorance. So part of my commitment as a trustee for the Elk Grove Unified School District is education and awareness. And we did a wonderful presentation today at Elk Grove High School with leaders of the Jakara movement that educated our students. So the more that we can educate, the more we can combat ignorance and hate. So thank you for all that you do, and good luck to every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, Bobby.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. I'm head priest with the American Sikh Congressional Caucus Committee. Again, we also like to pay homage to all those who lost their lives in the campfire and all the... and Godspeed to all those who are still suffering at this time, but also to the safety of our men and women who are serving today. I'm sure some of your members of the public safety is probably out there responding as well. Mayor, thank you for recognizing the Council for the American Sikh Awareness Month, but I just want to elaborate a little bit more on the Sikhs. As Bobby has also mentioned, the Sikhs came to this country around 1880, and although very few, they were mostly on the West Coast, and most arrived on Angel Island, just like Ellis Island is on the East Coast. Angel Island was something where all Asians came through, right in the San Francisco Bay. And as Asians, there were many difficulties. There were exclusionary laws placed on the Asians. There were only about 100 Sikhs or Pandavis allowed from India to come until 1923, when another change of law came in and things changed. But it was not till 1965 when the laws really changed, allowed immigration by family members. So prior to that, many Sikhs who were in this valley were not allowed to have their women come over. Sikhs married many, multiple of different ethnicity people from here, mostly Hispanics. So if you go into the Yuba City, others say you will find families who are mixed marriages, who also still have the word Singh as a name. But by 1930 or so, 80% of the land in the valley was owned by non-immigrants or people of color. And later on, because they were married with other... all the family, all the property was named under the women. But later, things changed, and agriculture became a host for the American Sikhs living in America. Today, if you bite into a peach, 95% of the peaches are grown in this state by Sikhs, 60% of the prunes, and 20% almonds and walnuts. This is just in the north of you. 20% of all the grapes in the central valley. Today, there are Sikhs known by raisin kings, okra kings, because they own the largest amount of land and produce that. But as mentioned before and in your proclamation, 40% of the trade that moves in the city and into the state and into this country, 40% of the trucking is owned by Sikhs. The system we are watching on today, fiber optics, created by Dr. Kapani, who was the father of fiber optics, right here in Stanford University. Today, there are doctors, engineers, lawyers, and yes, elected officials, just like you, serve throughout the city. There are mayors, councilmembers, school board members, commissioners. We're in every bit of the country, just as you are and all the other community is. We are the fabric that makes us all great, which we call our home in America. So moving forward, we want to be able to thank you for what you're doing here in this city as it resonates throughout the country. But I may also correct a little bit of record, there are over a million people that live in this country. Two weeks ago, in Yuba City, there were 100,000-plus Sikhs coming for an event. To say there were only 250,000 people in this country, that would... some records, perhaps they're in the state of California. So today, Sikhs also... Attorney General of New Jersey is a Sikh. So we are moving and representing the rest of the country, just like anybody else. So thank you for this recognition. But one other question, a little thing that Bobby alluded to. The migration also changed in the 80s. In 1984, there was a huge effect, that ripple that made this America, our immigration pattern change, which was the attack on the Golden Temple. Much of the immigration became after the 1980s, and to this day, there's a large number of immigrants who come to this country through the asylum system. 40% of those in the asylums in the southern California are Sikhs, still leaving the country because of the atrocities that have been committed there. So as we welcome immigrants, there are also... there are many in this nation that also come because of the hardships in their homeland. So thank you again, and God bless you. God bless the city.
Thank you, sir.
Most of the thanks that they already described in front of you. My name is Gurjitandar Singh Randawa. I serve on the Elk Grove Multicultural Committee and Elk Grove Historic Preservation Committee. Thank you to the City of Elk Grove for recognition, the important contribution of the Sikh community in California. It is important for US citizens to learn about Sikhs in California. 99% of men who wear turbans are Sikhs, which is the fifth-largest religion in the world with over 25 million Sikhs worldwide. Sikhs have excelled in security services and transportation services as doctors, attorney, engineers, teachers, and small business owners, and in other notable capacities. Sikh Americans have served the... continue to serve as mayor, councilmember of many California cities. Our first Sikh congressman in the US was Sardar Daliy Singh Saund, who served his term over 55 years ago. We are proud of all the Sikhs who are getting involved in the government, in the country, and the state. There are many Sikhs probably serving in the US military, including many who wear their turbans in the US Army. Two of them are from our local community and sacrificed their life to protect our community. One of the family members of the Army guy, he's with us today, Mr. Nirmal Singh, he's with us. Can you stand up, please, over there? His son was sacrificed in Afghanistan. Believe in selfless service, which we call SEWA. Our basic values are the same as your values. We believe in equality, justice, and religious freedom. I want to recognize and thank all those who have supported the Sikh community. Thank you Lieutenant Colonel Kamalsen Kalsee for his service to the US military, and also Steve Lee, the mayor of the Elk Grove City, for recognizing his service to the country during Veterans Day parade. Turban Sikhs, like myself, still face hate crimes, assaults, and sometimes even murder. We still have two unsolved murders of two elderly turbans in our city. Recently, a turban Sikh grandfather was attacked by teenager in Manticca. Another turban Sikh man was beaten in the Modesto area. These hate crimes must end. The best way to end hate is to teach tolerance and acceptance of other culture and people. We appreciate the resolution. Please work harder to teach our citizens about the contribution of all ethnic groups. We support stronger ethnic studies curriculum. Education should include teaching about all cultures and community. We are proud Sikh Americans. Our values are your values. We'd like to extend a large thanks to the mayor, councilmembers, and to all our city officials who understand our values and give us a chance to recognize and celebrate Sikh appreciation and awareness month. In addition, I would like to thank Barsha Sikh Temple Committee, who encouraged me to organize this event tonight. Also, all of our Sikh guests here today to show their support and celebrate with the rest of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So our community want a group picture with all the City Councilmember and Mr. Mayor. So can you please come over here?
Shall we do right there?
Yeah. Thanks. So I would like all of the... all the guests, please come to the other side. Everybody.
Should we go this way? Will we fake or should we?
Thank you, Darren. Thank you. Thank you, Lee.
I'm tall. I can fly.
This will be interesting. I'll try to make this...
It'll be kind of tricky, but you just have to suck it in.
You might have to do like really tall in the back. Is there anything there?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you... camera on the...
Right here. Councilmembers.
Right here.
You're hiding.
It's okay.
Take a picture.
Just make it work.
Steve is doing it right.
Barsha Sikh temple, please.
Me too.
Come on here.
Steve, just had a meet you.
Phone, bring on.
I...
Sami, Sami.
Ram, real is a Punjabi guy.
Ram.
Come on, Ram.
Please closer, everyone.
We need you here.
Ready, guys?
Suck it in.
All right. One, two, three, and five-one, get one, three. One, two, three. You guys are almost three.
All right, hold on. Stay there, stay there, stay there.
Are we good?
Oh, Jesus.
Hold it. You gotta hold it.
Okay.
Everybody look right here. I'm here. One, two, three. I'm gonna say I keep taking a few. I know it's quiet, but it's taken.
Thank you.
Are we good?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Next item.
Next will take us to Section 5, our public comment.
And we have a number of members of the public sign up to speak. First speaker to sign up to speak is Benita. Benida. Benida. Following Benida is Greg.
Thank you, Mayor Lee and councilmembers.
Folks, can we leave it outside, please, folks? To continue the meeting. Thank you.
And for the speaker to your left, there is a microphone. If you speak into that one, that'll do it.
Hello. Hello, councilmembers. Because I'm not able to attend the November 28th meeting on 5G in a couple weeks, I'm here to give you my input regarding 5G in Elk Grove. I'm a Sacramento resident, and I am seeking a safe and healthy place for myself and my family. Sacramento has already installed 5G all over the city, including in front of our parks, schools, and homes, including near my own house. As a mother, it's my job to keep my children safe and protected, and that's why I'm here today. 5G technology... Well, I'm so concerned about 5G technology that I'm willing to uproot my life and move to Elk Grove, so that's why I'm here today, if you do not put 5G smell cells near homes. 5G technology is not safe for human beings, given the countless studies that warn against the technology and its potential health risks. So what is 5G? Until very recently, I didn't know anything about this new technology. 5G consists of wireless antennas that emit high-frequency microwave radiation that can have severe adverse mental and physical damage to human beings, not to mention adverse effects to animals and trees. I'm not a scientist or a medical professional, and I don't work for the cellphone companies. I'm simply a mom. And as a mother, that information scares me. 5G is an experimental technology with zero long-term studies proving this technology is 100% safe for human beings. Why are we willing to risk our health just to have faster internet connection for our devices? Is faster internet truly worth the risk of our health and the health of our children? This has very real implications for our babies and our children as they develop in the presence of constant radiation. 5G technology affects everyone. Bigger, better, and faster internet isn't necessarily better if it poses a viable health risk to our general population. In addition, 5G isn't even needed for emergency phone calls or text messaging. So although I'm not an Elk Grove constituent, like many nearby residents of this city, I frequent Elk Grove weekly for classes, for myself and my baby, grocery shopping, shopping, and appointments. So I'm hoping that you consider what I've said tonight, and you will consider what other cities have done, such as Petaluma and Mill Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker. Next speaker is Greg.
My name is Gray Estrada. I'm speaking on behalf of the 5G technology that my wife was just speaking about. We're told that 5G technology is the next best thing in technology, bringing greater efficiency and opportunity for the general population. But personally, I don't buy that. I oppose 5G technology in Elk Grove, and let me tell you why. One, 5G technology is experimental. There are zero... Benida. Benida. Following Benida is Greg.
Thank you, Mayor Lee and council members. Because I'm not able.
Can we leave it outside, please, folks? To continue the meeting, thank you.
And for the speaker to your left, there is a microphone. If you speak into that one, that'll do it.
Hello. Hello, council members. Because I'm not able to attend the November 28th meeting on 5G. In a couple of weeks, I'm here to give you my input regarding 5G in Elk Grove. I'm a Sacramento resident and I am seeking a safe and healthy place for myself and my family. Sacramento has already installed 5G all over the city, including in front of our parks, schools, and homes, including near my own house. As a mother, it's my job to keep my children safe and protected, and that's why I'm here today. 5G technology, well, I'm so concerned about 5G technology that I'm willing to uproot my life and move to Elk Grove. So that's why I'm here today, if you do not put 5G smell cells near homes. 5G technology is not safe for human beings, given the countless studies that warn against the technology and its potential health risks. So what is 5G? Until very recently, I didn't know anything about this new technology. 5G consists of wireless antennas that emit high-frequency microwave radiation that can have severe adverse mental and physical damage to human beings, not to mention adverse effects to animals and trees. I'm not a scientist or a medical professional, and I don't work for the cellphone companies. I'm simply a mom. And as a mother, that information scares me. 5G is an experimental technology with zero long-term studies proving this technology is 100% safe for human beings. Why are we willing to risk our health just to have faster internet connection for our devices? Is faster internet truly worth the risk of our health and the health of our children? This has very real implications for our babies and our children as they develop in the presence of constant radiation. 5G technology affects everyone. Bigger, better, and faster internet isn't necessarily better if it poses a viable health risk to our general population. In addition, 5G isn't even needed for emergency phone calls or text messaging. So, although I'm not an Elk Grove constituent, like many nearby residents of this city, I frequent Elk Grove weekly for classes, for myself and my baby, grocery shopping, shopping, and appointments. So I'm hoping that you consider what I've said tonight, and you will consider what other cities have done, such as Petaluma and Mill Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker. Next speaker is Greg.
Good evening, council members. My name is Gray Estrada. I'm speaking on behalf of the 5G technology that my wife was just speaking about. We're told that 5G technology is the next best thing in technology, bringing greater efficiency and opportunity for the general population. But personally, I don't buy that. I oppose 5G technology in Elk Grove, and let me tell you why. One, 5G technology is experimental. There are zero long-term studies on how the radiation emitted from these towers affect human beings. Proponents of 5G openly state how this technology moves through organic matter, like trees and water. Please note, 70% of the human body is water, meaning this technology can and will move through us, our ecosystems, and our children. These companies ensure us that 5G is safe, but this is fraudulent, given the lack of long-term research. In the 1950s, the tobacco industry told us cigarettes were safe. Anytime huge corporations stand to make billions of dollars, their claims need to be met with scrutiny, skepticism, and discernment. Make no mistake, there are huge profits to be made by blanketing this technology across the country. Countless studies indicate 5G can affect children's brain development, increase cancer risk, and cause damage at the DNA level. These studies alone should bring opposition to 5G. Number two, bringing 5G technology to Elk Grove has social and cultural implications. We all see the growing trend of people being entranced by their phones and devices. Our children don't hang out in circles and laugh and tell stories after school anymore. They huddle in disjointed groups, looking down at their phones like zombies, occasionally looking up to reference a picture from Facebook or Snapchat. This attachment to our technology has come at a very real price. Grandchildren aren't talking to their grandparents because they'd rather watch YouTube. Kids don't ask their parents about historical events because Google can answer it. Adults are ignoring their children at meals to check their phones. Our friends text to other people during intimate conversations. 5G technology reinforces this growing trend of social dysfunction by stressing connection to our devices and not the people in our lives. The question then becomes, what kind of city do you want to be? One that prizes technology over human connection? Or a city that believes there's more to life than being glued to our technology? Number three, home values are compromised. Many people oppose 5G technology, meaning heaps of potential homeowners, myself included, are avoiding purchasing homes that have 5G towers near them, or worse yet, directly on them. In closing, I'd like to point out that Steve Jobs, the founder of Apple, and Bill Gates, the founder of Microsoft, severely restricted technology for their children because they feared the effects it would have on them. Palo Alto, a place of tremendous wealth in the epicenter of Silicon Valley, is fighting 5G technology as we speak. When the creators and central hubs to these technologies are saying no, it behooves all of us to pay attention and ask why. Why does implementing experimental, how does implementing experimental technology outweigh the health and safety of our children, families, and communities? Why is everyone so eager to take this risk with 5G without the backing of long-term research studies? Please sit with these questions, and please fight 5G technology coming to Elk Grove, and at the very least, keep 5G away from residential areas, schools, and the parks where our children play. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Voice Jeffries. Following Voice is Dante Williams.
Good evening. I apologize to city council and also the staff. At a previous council meeting, I brought up the cost of the parking permits for preferential parking and everything of that nature. And it came to my attention that actually, rather than this costing $14 at one time, there was a purchase made that these were $29 apiece. $29 apiece. Then also the smaller parking permits, where I stated $10.75, which I told you at the previous council meeting, actually, these came in at $16.75. Again, from New York City, okay? And I would just like to point out, hopefully, is there any internal control here in this city? I mean, this is like giving my kid a credit card and say, hey, go at it. Who oversees credit cards? No answers?
No, please go ahead and finish speaking. We can direct you to appropriate staff.
Okay, then you'll answer the questions afterwards.
This is not a conversation, just go ahead and speak, please.
Now, okay, what I did for you, and I'll give it to the city manager, you can say it. I went to just a local business. You know how much this cost me? $2.49, okay? It's not real classic like you guys have. It's laminated, and I was charged $0.49 for the piece of paper. Okay? It's ludicrous. You guys have endless money. Money's not an issue in this city, I guess. Okay? Now, what I recommend, since it was not done correctly, the ordinance, is we rescind, I recommend, I'm not telling you what to do, because you'll do what you want to do. Rescind the ordinance and start over. Conduct a survey, a survey, not a petition. Not a petition. That's what the survey says. In fact, I would like legal counsel, city manager, or the mayor, write me a letter stating that you adhered to the ordinance as written. As written. Okay? Now, this is ludicrous. Talking about ludicrous, the one Lammery Street, whatever, over there on Elk Grove Boulevard? Okay. I have a letter that I got from the city clerk. It says, "I am the owner of a strip of vacant land, dirt, that he did not want the preferential parking over there." Okay? A letter, okay? Another letter with a petition saying that they didn't want the preferential parking. Then all of a sudden, I see a petition where they wanted it. It's an apple and an orange. What was right? Again, no survey was conducted, and a petition was utilized. What a farce. It's a farce. Do it right. That's all I ask. Do it right. As the ordinance states, conduct a survey. And one last thing, okay, I know my time's up. I'm still awaiting an answer from city staff regarding where we place these. I asked back in August. I had a staff member come down my street in August. I still haven't had a response. And to top it off, they only sent me two in the mail, so I needed one for the third car. They gave me a parking pass for Franklin High School. What's, you know? I'll be back, because, you know, and all I asked back in July is pull the item for two words. If you would have done that, I wouldn't be here. I would have been a happy camper. But every time I ask for information, it opens another door. It opens another door. And I'll be back. And I'll be back. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, have you connected with Mr. Jeffries? Okay, if you could follow up, and I'd like to know what's going on as well. Alright, thank you. Our next speaker is Dante Williams. Mr. Williams, come on up, please.
And Mr. Williams submitted a PowerPoint presentation, which he did so within our policy for the 24 hours. And just pulling that up for his use.
Alright, my name is Dante Williams. I'm with Verizon Wireless. I work for the Small Cell Initiative. I'd like to thank the city council and all the council members and the mayor staff for giving me the opportunity to present. We'd like to partner with the city of Elk Grove because we believe that this technology is going to bring a lot of benefits, right? Increased wireless services, increased reliability of the network. There's going to be economic benefits and also resiliency of the network, because you'll have an overarching macro network and a small cell network. We also believe this technology is going to become very important for tourism. It's going to be extremely important when you want to bring things into your communities, such as meetings, and that technology is going to be ubiquitous, right? So, you know, if you think about a wireless network like a superhighway, it's an information superhighway, we're seeing data usage surge. And every one of our projections has been under. It's been larger than we expected. So with the highway, you got more traffic, you need more lanes. And that's what the small cell network and our 5G deployment is all about. It's about bringing that capacity before those users, who are constantly taking up more and more data, you know, surge onto the network and don't have the capacity that they need to move forward. And this also can have impacts for calls, call quality, and public safety. Different locations also require different solutions. So Verizon is taking a very balanced approach to the way we deploy our network. It'll be a combination of your traditional macros. We'll still continue to build those to a lesser extent. But these small cells, which are lower powered than our traditional macros, and they're really short wave, about 500 to 1,000 feet of coverage, would be located on vertical access that the city would own, like light poles, light structures, and different street furniture, street art. And the reason we need this is because, again, we have to get the quality of service closer to the users, right? The bandwidth that you need and the amount of users on a traditional macro just can't support gigabit internet. So it's really important that we deploy this so that we can stay ahead of this data traffic surge that we're seeing at every major city, every small city. I mean, even looking in your own connected communities where there's more street sensors. So, you know, and different things that can be used on this technology, including public safety. So I'm available to answer any questions that you may have. Again, my name is Dante Williams. I work with Verizon Wireless. I'm the municipal outreach specialist. So I'm your single point of contact, or, you know, feel free to ask any questions of Verizon Wireless through me or through anybody in my office. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Hume.
Dante, do you plan on attending the workshop on the 28th of November?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. I will definitely be at the workshop.
Alright. I'm good, thank you.
Okay, alright, thank you, sir. Next speaker is Mark Graham. Following Mark Graham is Amr Shergill.
And Mr. Graham also submitted a presentation for this evening and also in accordance with the policy.
Mr. Graham, I apologize, we weren't able to connect today.
Oh, let's make it happen soon.
Yeah.
Excellent. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Mark Graham. I live in Elk Grove. Where do I start? Air pollution. The situation we're experiencing with air pollution is a really good analogy to what would happen if you allowed AT&amp;T and Verizon to do what they want to do and put these 4G and 5G cell antennas on telephone poles and light poles all up through our residential neighborhoods. You go outside, and you cannot escape it, right? There are people who simply cannot go outdoors in this condition and haven't been able to for what, a week? Because it's so irritating through their lungs. They're not at the council meeting. And there are two differences, really. It's a perfect analogy because it's an involuntary exposure to a pollutant and a known toxin. And there are really two differences. This case is from the Camp Fire, right? Which I know Councilmember Detrick's been fighting on behalf of PG&E. And it's not done by a multi-billion dollar corporation that's just out to make a buck. And the second difference is, the air pollution is basically not in our homes. Electromagnetic fields from these dangerous antennas will come into your home whether you like it or not. So it's a good analogy. I have to point out, the decision that the council makes on this issue is one of the most important and far-reaching decisions that this city will ever make. I'm talking about this council or any other council that's been or will be. Because you have the potential to do it right, and you have the potential to really foul it up and expose us all to an involuntary exposure to a toxin, and it's just going to harm a lot of people's health. It will affect property values and aesthetics, too. Mr. Williams mentioned a couple of things. I think most of the benefits that he claimed are phony. It's all about the data, and he did acknowledge that. They're trying to sell cellphone users more data. These antennas are not needed for cellphone calls, and they're not needed for text messages. They're needed primarily for games and videos. And the more data you use on games and videos, the higher they're going to bill you. That's what's going on. He also mentioned that these antennas have 500 to 1,000 feet of coverage, whatever that means, and that is not true. I showed you a video from Verizon Chief Executive Officer Lowell McAdams some time ago in which he says that the 5G cell antennas have a range of 2,000 feet from the antenna to the receiver, whatever that is. Oh, boy. The National League of Cities recommends that cities oppose a bill in the Senate called S-3157. I sent the council an email about that. I'm asking, and the reasons are similar to the reasons that the council and the city opposed SB 649 in the legislature last year. I'm asking you to do that. Also, I'm recommending that council direct the staff to do a poll of Elk Grove Realtors and simply ask the question, what do you think it would do to the property value of a home to have one of these ugly antennas in front of it? If you ask the question, you will find out. I met with staff yesterday, and we reached agreement on a way in which the consultant that I've been recommending can be made part of the community workshop two weeks from tonight. Essentially, he's going to be available by Skype to do part of the presentation in the beginning and also to answer questions. Staff refused to pay for him, so I will raise money and pay for him. And that will be a good thing. Now, I'm also asking the council to direct the staff to study the ordinances from Petaluma and Mill Valley to just see, can we do this? Can Elk Grove do this? And I'll tell you, when I met with staff, the city attorney said, "Why do you assume that the ordinance passed by the city of Mill Valley is legal?" And I said, "Why would you assume it's not legal?" This council passes ordinances all the time, right?
Mr. Graham, if you can wrap it up, please.
I will. Why do you assume that any of those ordinances are legal? It represents an attitude of hostility toward the idea that this city should protect its interests and the interests of its residents. And unless the council takes control and directs the council to look at the Mill Valley and Petaluma ordinances, it's going to remain like that. We need to protect ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Amr Shergill, and following Amr Shergill is Janice Genaway.
Good evening, council. Congratulations to Mayor Lee, Councilmember Hume, and Councilmember Nguyen on your reelection efforts. And for everything the entire council does for the city. I do appreciate all of the work that you put in. Today, I ask you again to save the city of Elk Grove millions of dollars. As you may be aware, the city of Santa Monica was sued by a nonprofit and Kevin Schenkman, the same attorney that has put the city of Elk Grove on notice for racial discrimination under the California Voter Rights Act. I trust that the city attorney has advised you that the city of Santa Monica lost that lawsuit. It will cost them $5 to $10 million, maybe more, because they made the same decision that the city of Elk Grove is making. They had big shot attorneys who told them that the case could be beaten, and they were wrong, and they lost, and the taxpayers will pay millions upon millions of dollars. And that's where the city of Elk Grove is right now. The city was found in violation of the California Voter Rights Act for discriminating against people of color, despite the fact that Latinos and other people of color have been elected to that council. The facts in Santa Monica are astonishingly similar to Elk Grove. Both cities have people of color on the council, yet both cities also discriminate against people of color because the at-large system makes it more difficult for those people to be elected. It is simply a fact that in Santa Monica and in Elk Grove, there are areas that vote less for people of color. That's just the truth. That is racially polarized voting, and it is a CVRA violation. In order for a person of color to win in Elk Grove, they have to overcome that deficit in that part of town, that racially polarized voting. The easiest way to overcome that deficit is with money. It takes hundreds of thousands of dollars, as you all well know. But the source of that money is corporations, PG&E, developers, people that don't really care about the long-term health of Elk Grove. That's bad for democracy. Candidates should win on their ideas based on community support. Today, you say that you appreciate the Sikh community that I'm a part of, yet you support a racially discriminatory system in violation of the CVRA that makes it more difficult for Sikhs and other people of color to be elected. If you appreciate the Sikh community, if you appreciate people of color, then give them an equal chance at being elected. Stop wasting taxpayer money fighting to uphold an antiquated system because it benefits your personal politics. It is a breach of trust for you to use the Elk Grove taxpayers' money to spend millions on a discriminatory voting system that benefits you personally. Do the right thing, switch to bi-district voting. And I'm going to take a moment here on a different topic. I want to thank you for appreciating the Sikh community today. One of the reasons that we have the November Sikh Appreciation Month is that just a week ago, we had the anniversary of the 1984 genocide of Sikhs. I apologize, I'm going to be really quick. In most jurisdictions, that anniversary is not really pertinent to the celebration they had here today and that they have in other places. But in Elk Grove, it is very pertinent. Because we are represented in Congress by a candidate, Ami Barra, who is a genocide denier. He is the only elected official in this part of the world and perhaps in all of the United States that continues to deny that the genocide occurred, even though it was unanimously passed by the Senate and the Assembly of the State of California. If we are going to honor the Sikh community today in Elk Grove, we need to be clear that a genocide denier represents the city of Elk Grove in Congress. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hobbs, just a quick question. I have not heard about this case. Would you be able to brief us at a later time on this?
Yeah, I can tell you generally, the tentative decision just happened last week, so it's brand new. It's not a final decision yet.
Alright.
The case isn't final yet.
Okay, thank you. And next speaker is Janice Genaway. Following Janice is Laura.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council, fellow citizens of Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council, fellow citizens of Elk Grove. My name is Janice Genaway. I am here on behalf of VFW Post 2073 in Elk Grove. The VFW is made up of veterans of foreign wars and we're the largest veteran service organization in the country. Here in Elk Grove, we're proud to be part of the community. Our members are veterans of the Army, Marine Corps, Navy, and Air Force, and we range in age from 36 to 95. Some of us are retired while many still work full-time. We attend funeral services, participate in parades, assist in flag retirements, help veterans obtain benefits, and provide emergency financial assistance to fellow veterans and more. We also hold a scholarship essay contest each year for local high school and middle school students. This year's theme was "Why My Vote Matters," an important topic. The awards for first, second, and third place will be presented in December. The Voice of Democracy Awards Dinner is also our last meeting of the year. As we look forward to next year and moving into our new home in the Veterans Hall, we would like to invite you to join us for dinner. Come meet the members of our post and help us congratulate our scholarship winners. Our Voice of Democracy Awards Dinner will be on December 13th at the Senior Center in Elk Grove on 8830 Sharkey Avenue. The social hour starts at 6:00 PM. I have a ticket for each of you here. I hope that you will RSVP and join us.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah. You can pass it on to the clerk and he'll get it to us. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Laura. Following Laura is Marine Craft.
Good job, Mom.
Hi, good evening. My name is Laura. I'm here to speak against 5G. I'm also a concerned citizen. I'm here from Elk Grove and I wish not to have 5G in front of my house or near my children. I'm very concerned, as the mother had spoke about earlier, about the health concerns. I know that there were health concerns that LA County firefighters had and they didn't put them up. So that's what I'm hoping for, for here, that you listen. We do not want them in our neighborhoods. And I also recommend hiring an expert and that is not part of the telecommunications industry because I feel like that's a conflict of interest for the workshop as well. So, please, I do not want them. I'm very concerned about the health ramifications that they pose. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Marine Craft is our next speaker. Following Marine is Randy Becker.
I'm here primarily right now in this portion to congratulate Mayor Lee and his win and to also speak to the council. You know, Mayor Lee is in his second tenure now as being the mayor and the last tenure was god-awful to watch. It was awful to watch because the four, the five of you guys did not come together. It felt as if it was a four-on-one. And as a constituent of Elk Grove and as the voters have voted, they voted in Mayor Lee. What I am hoping, that because now you are all elected into office, Pat probably having the longest tenure and Stephanie being the newest person on the council, I'm hoping, I'm really hoping, that you guys can all work together. You guys are here as elected officials to benefit Elk Grove, not as a show, as an ego We want to be represented professionally. And when council members come together, they get things done. When they work together with their mayor, they get even more done. So I'm speaking for some of the constituents of Elk Grove that we would like to see a better display of professionalism by the entire council. And we would like to see you guys all work together. Once again, congratulations, Mayor Lee.
Thank you. Next speaker is Randy Becker. Following Randy is Connie Connolly.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, congratulations to the three of you. I won't speak too much on what Marine says, but in all honesty, we need to get past this last five months. My, my neighbor comes to you to say some things towards how Santa Monica is. Maybe I can just order up a dump truck full of mud and we can all throw mud against the wall and see what sticks. We just had an election. We had information that the city compiled on by district in the past elections and how and who won their district and continued to win their votes within the city. We also talked about the 2020 census. We also talked about the fact that making more districts possibly after the 2020 census and the idea of even possibly even looking at whether it'd be important to go to by district. Our election now is behind us for two years. So we need to move forward as a city on city issues, traffic, jobs, and other issues dealing with the city. Not what we can do to continue stirring things up that people will not agree with. Now, if you guys want me to order the dump truck, I can pick up my phone and call it right now. But I don't want to do that. I don't think you do either. If we're going to move forward, let's move forward together. When 2020 comes and the census comes, then let's have a conversation. I'm open to that. But if you guys want to continue throwing, you know, if different people want to continue throwing things around of the way it should be, since there's no election for two years, then we'll just sit here and argue amongst ourselves for two more years. I'm game. Are you? Is that really what we want to do? Or do we want to move together as, as a community? One last thing. It is tough to see what's gone on this last week and a half in this state. Tough. A lot of people have lost their lives, their homes. It's sad. Death count up north is 56 tonight. And it's going to get higher. One last thing. In January, February, I would like to see this council come together with CSD and talk about emergency preparedness with the chief and, and the fire chief. Not so much on fire, but we have issues, as Mr. Soon is certainly aware of, of flood problems. And that will be our Achilles' heel if we're not careful. So I would suggest that to the city, that we have an open forum just dedicated to emergency preparedness. Thank you.
Randy, I talked to the fire chief just this, this past week relative to that and I think I sent a message to Chief Noblet that that's something that's already in the works because that was something that I wanted to find out about, too. So that is in the works. And great, I agree with you 100%.
Good, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah. Excellent. Anyone else? Okay. Next speaker is Connie Connolly.
Mayor Lee used my nickname.
I apologize, Constance.
It's okay. It's a joke. Amar reminded me of something that I've been wanting to talk to you all about. And that is our precious tax dollars and how we need to save them. Few years ago, this council was given advice on the P3 international lawsuit that it was a material breach of contract. And this council voted to sue. Our tax dollars are very precious and we need to keep them close at heart because there's going to be tough times ahead. You know, this, this, recessions always hit and we need to be mindful of that. So it was really disheartening to find out that we did sue and we did settle. I believe the amount of the breach was between $595,000 and $800,000. I can't remember. Somewhere in that range. Now, mind you, it was a material breach of contract. We settled for $50,000, 45 of which went to an outside law firm. Now, no lawsuit can be settled unless the council approves it. And we have, and this is no reflection on John, but we have expanded our city attorney's office and in the future, and we have added more attorneys. You cannot tell me there's not one litigator in that department where we no longer have to farm out our lawsuits. Yes, attorney's fees are expensive. No one knows that better than I do. But if it's in-house and we're paying a litigator to go into court and represent our city on lawsuits that are material breaches of contracts, that saves our city money, we recoup our losses, and we're not paying it to outside law firms. So I would like you to consider in the future that lawsuits are a part of doing business, that we keep them in-house as much as we can and not farm out those legal fees to another law firm. And congratulations, Mayor Lee. And yes, I believe we need to put, move forward, keeps, it keeps coming up. I'm happy about the Hall of Fame last night. I worked very hard on that proposal along with Darren and glad to see people like Elaine Ride and Arnie Zimbalman honored. They are what's best about Elk Grove and we can learn from their graciousness. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And before you leave, I just want to give you a heads up. I had a conversation with the chief already about the CRT and I think he has something to tell you about that. So just, we can take it offline, but just wanted to give you a heads up.
CRT?
The Crisis Response Team.
I'm very happy about that as well. Thank you. You have great people. We don't need to be elected. You know what Barack Obama said? The, the, the most important is the citizen is that of the private citizen in local government. And I'm paraphrasing. So you have great people that have a lot to give in this city and you need to put all the differences aside and utilize people like Lynn Wheat, Suzanne Petchy, Randy Becker, Amar Shergill, myself, Linda Ford. I could go on and on and on and on because there's so many of us who want to contribute of our time and we do it freely and we don't get paid for it. So there must be a reason why we do it. And there's one reason only, it's because we love our city, too. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Seeing that there are no additional speakers, let's move to the next item.
Take us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Quite a few items just to touch on briefly. Wanted to talk about the campfire for a second and the response from our police department. This last Thursday, Elk Grove Police Department sworn and dispatch personnel were deployed to the campfire in Butte County to assist with evacuations, traffic control, and the general protection of life and property. Staff were released from their assignment on Sunday afternoon. You may have seen some publicity about that as well. There's a couple of our officers that found a flag that was highlighted in, in the ruin that's up there. A lot of residents that are interested in helping and donating and volunteering. Our End of Watch Fund, we have a lot of, of our police officers, dispatchers, and others within the community that are collecting donations and funds for that. There's a list on the End of Watch Facebook page of items that they're collecting. We're receiving them right here in the lobby here at this, at this building, a variety of different things, new items that are being collected and distributed up to Butte County. So people that are interested in donating, please take a look at that list and come on down. We're accepting donations through November 16th at 5:00 PM. Additionally, the End of Watch Fund knows of over 60 law enforcement employees who have lost their homes but continue to serve and protect their communities. We have been in contact with the affected law enforcement associations and have initiated online fundraising drive for law enforcement that has already raised over $11,000 in just two days. These funds are already being directed to law enforcement families in the affected areas. Visit the End of Watch Facebook page for more information. An event that occurred last Wednesday on November 7th, the Kusumis Fire Department recognized first responders for their life-saving efforts. Eight police officers and additional fire department personnel were reunited with CPR survivors, including a three-year-old boy. This is one of the first programs in the region focused on reunited CPR survivors with first responders who played a role in their care. This was an emotional experience for all involved and we thank the CCSD Fire Department for coordinating the opportunity. More than 40 students attended the Youth Commission's Stronger Together event last Saturday to discuss issues facing teens, including mental illness and stress. The group heard from a speaker from JJ's Hello Foundation, participated in stress management activity, and engaged in small group discussions that emphasized ways to provide and receive peer support. The Youth Commission will host their next event, Shape Your Future, on January 19th. The Police Department and the Golden State Restaurant Group will be hosting a Beacon of Blue event tomorrow at McDonald's on Elk Grove Boulevard. This event is intended to encourage alliance between law enforcement and the Elk Grove community. McDonald's restaurant staff will symbolically flip a switch to illuminate small blue lights along the rooftop of the restaurants to show their respect and support for our police officers. This event starts at 5:00 PM at the McDonald's on Elk Grove Boulevard. For, for animal, Animal Services will be hosting a drive-through vaccination clinic on Saturday, December 1st, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the parking lot next to 8220 Longleaf Drive. Rabies and distemper vaccines will be offered for dogs and rabies and feline distemper vaccines will be offered for cats. Microchips and free pet licensing will be available for residents with spayed or neutered pets who have never been, before been licensed. See the city's website for more details. Couple other events that are coming up. Thanksgiving Day, 10K, 5K, and Kids Fun Run to benefit chicks in crisis. The Gobble Wobble Run returns to Elk Grove on this Thanksgiving morning. Traffic advisory with road closures and detour information will be released later this week. Race registration and event details are available at elkgroveeggobblewobble.com. City's Old Town Elk Grove Foundation will host the 31st Annual Dickens Street Fair on Saturday, November 24th, in Old Town Elk Grove. Street Fair festivities will run from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM and the Parade of Lights will begin at 6:00 PM. Commercial, organics, recycling, public outreach. Our recycling staff will be visiting businesses about, teaching them about ways that they can continue to recycle and put their organics in the, in the right place. If there's any questions, it can be directed to our solid waste and recycling staff. One of the last items is No Shave November. Look around at staff, you see a lot of furry faces. It's for a good cause. Police Department and city employees are participating in No Shave November. This is the first year we're doing this, to raise awareness and funding for cancer prevention, education, and research. Participating officers and staff are growing out their facial hairs until the end of the month, November 30th. All proceeds from No Shave November will be donated to a cancer research or patient support organization. So far, city employees have raised over $5,000 for this cause. And finally, hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving. City offices will be closed next Thursday and Friday in celebration of this holiday. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions? There are no questions. All right, I'd like to start. Councilmember Nguyen, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mayor. Attended quite a few community events, so I'll just highlight a few. Last year, we had the opportunity to hold the Dewali Festival of Lights here and it was a full house. This year, it was held at the hall, the town hall, and it was wonderful to see all of us there and all of us dressed in traditional outfits and lots of pictures were taken, so I really enjoyed that. Thank you to the chief for attending the Links to Law Enforcement graduation with me, where we collaborated with Urban League and La Familia. We had about 16 participants from the API community, 21 from the Latino community, I think 10 from the African-American community that graduated that evening and hopefully we can still a few of those to come work for our department here. Also, congratulations to our very own Commissioner, Kevin Spees, for winning the Elk Grove Citizen of the Year Award. I was told it was a full house and it was the most elected officials that's ever attended a, a Citizen of the Year event. And Kevin Spees has done so many things for our community here, so it was very much so deserving. And then I had the opportunity to attend the Second Annual Elk Grove Hall of Fame Award, which Ms. Constance Connolly talked about earlier. It was such a moving, touching event. I didn't realize we had, I knew, I've always known we had such amazing people that lived here in our city, but just to see Arnie and listening to him and Elaine talk about all the wonderful things they've done here in our community. But even the gentleman, Jeremy Reeves, who is the guitarist or the percussionist?
Music producer.
Yep. Play, I mean, he's won several awards and played for Play, I mean, he's won several awards and played for Justin Bieber and Bruno Mars and just quite a few artists that we all know here. And then the artist, the artist that his paintings sell for hundreds and thousands of dollars here. We have such amazing folks here and so I, I appreciated going to that event and I look forward to attending it next year as well. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Detrick.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, first thing I want to talk about is the sadness that's taken place across the country with, you know, the Pittsburgh shooting, Thousand Oaks, and then obviously the campfire, the hillfire, and the Woolsey Fire. I've had the opportunity over the last week with my other hat that I wear at PG&E to be involved with restoration up in the campfire and the devastation for the people that have, you know, lost family members, friends, their homes, their pets, and, and being displaced. And just seeing the, the damage and disarray is something beyond words. And just wanted to just take a moment to have people reflect on how lucky we are with, with the rights that we have and, and the freedoms that we have. We just passed Veterans Day where we unfortunately had to cancel the parade because of the air quality, which I think it was the right thing to do, but we still honored those veterans because of those freedoms that they've given us. But again, my heart goes out to all those that are going through these extremely hard times with their friends and their families. Second thing I wanted to bring up, the entire council, we rallied together several weeks ago to put on the Turkey Drive to help over 5,000 individuals that we have here in Elk Grove, all the way from children to seniors that are in need of food. And we're rallying for the Elk Grove Food Bank Turkey Drive. It ends this Friday and we'll be distributing turkeys this Saturday here at City Hall to those who've qualified through the food bank. But any of you that are either here tonight or listening to this, or if you can tell somebody, pass it on on Facebook, there is a huge need here, here in Elk Grove. And if you can kind of just reach out and give a little bit, no matter whether it's a dollar or $10,000, whatever you can do to help out would be, we mean something to these over 5,000 people. And the biggest, right now, one of the biggest increases to the food bank is in the seniors. And I don't know about most of you, but I, I've got a soft spot for kids and a real big soft spot for seniors and disabled folks, so kind of dig deep and see what you could do over this holiday season. Relative to the, to the fires, I want to give the chief and his team, as well as our CSD Fire Department that have rallied to send people up to the, to campfires and just all the first responders in general for not only what you do with these, these type of emergencies, but what you do in day in, day out. Make sure you pass that on to your team, chief. I had an opportunity to join, I think the whole council was there for the Diwali Festival Lights at the Laguna Town Hall. As was mentioned earlier, this chamber was packed last year. There was standing room only and I'm, so I'm guessing there was 200-plus people in here. There was 500-plus people standing room only at Laguna Town Hall. And as our city manager brought to my attention, our community center will be open next year and will, that'll hold 1,000 people. So we look forward to doubling the size of that, which is, which is another phenomenal event that our multicultural commission has brought forward. Also was with the entire council for Kevin Spees's Citizen of the Year. Kevin and Angela both, you know, phenomenal residents here in Elk Grove. They give in so many ways and they're involved with so many different organizations. It was, it was definitely a huge hit for having Kevin. And then, as was mentioned, the Elk Grove Hall of Fame. The entire council was there last night as well. And, you know, it's interesting, all the events have their own little twist to them, but I have to agree that, that's the second year I've been and to see, last year I believe it was five, this year six recipients, and their stories of, and their deep roots here in Elk Grove and what they've been able to accomplish. And the common thing among all of them was community. And just absolutely loved, loved the event last night and look forward to many more of those. And that's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Since a lot of folks went over a lot of the things that council's been to, I just want to add on, we, Councilmember Wayne and, and Councilmember Hume and myself had the opportunity to attend a opening for the Makame and Core Esthetics Dance Studio over in East Elk Grove. And then had Library Authority Budget Audit Committee today, as well as Transportation Committee meeting last week, and then STA meeting for that, and then SECOG meeting tomorrow. I want to also commend our officers for volunteering or being, for their service up at the Butte Fires. Hope they're home safe and keeping safe. And to all the men and women up there that are still, still doing service, putting their lives on the line. As we, you know, move, as we consider all these things that are happening around our state today, and as we come up on Thanksgiving, you know, I want to also congratulate Mayor Lee on his victory, you know?
Thank you, appreciate that.
Absolutely. And Councilmember Wayne and Councilmember Hume on their elections. I look forward to this council working together in the next two, over the next two years at least, and look forward to sitting down with you, Mayor, to talk about how we move forward.
Yeah, excellent.
Thank you.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just mention a couple of the ones that I already mentioned, the Makame Malia Opaalania Dance Group, the grand opening, what a great turnout, great dance group and great talented group of dancers. The Diwali Festival Lights, I was only able to stay there to kick it off, but as has been mentioned, it was an amazing turnout. The Laguna Town Hall looked fantastic and I hope that next year I will be able to partake in some of the entertainment. I attended the Arts Commission inaugural Iris Awards, which recognizes some folks in different categories of the visual and performing arts. And that was a very well-attended for a first-time event and I congratulate all of the winners there. Attended the Citizen of the Year Dinner. I had a LAFCO meeting. Nothing of importance to Elk Grove was on the agenda, but I will say that we conducted interviews of the subcommittee that was appointed at that meeting, myself included, conducted the interviews this afternoon to fill the public member position with the retirement of Commissioner Harrison. And that will be announced in December and they will be sworn in in February, given that there's no meeting in January. Attended the Hall of Fame Dinner and I will echo the comments by Councilmember Detrick that to a person, every one of the recipients somehow tied back to the sense of community and the feeling of Elk Grove and what made it special. And really was a neat affirmation of what, you know, I really value and cherish in Elk Grove is that it feels much smaller than we really are. And one of the individuals, the gentleman mentioned, who's the musician that is internationally known, has won Emmys and travels the world for his work, primarily based in LA, just bought his second house in Elk Grove because that's where he considers home. And so he commutes more or less to places all over the world, but, but wants to raise his family here where he grew up. And then had Regional SAN Board meeting this morning. Not much on the agenda, but there was a lengthy discussion regarding the refurbishment of the Nicholas and Sims Ranches into educational repurpose. The staff request was to double the budget and the mayor can report out on that if he wishes, but I'd hoped to try and find a way to maybe put that over to a foundation to, to take that on and see if there wasn't a, a better delivery method. And then this afternoon, Councilmember Detrick and I had the Audit Committee meeting where we reviewed the local investment program of putting some of our investment dollars into community banks. I think it was a very good recap and I think the, the program seems to be working and seems to be trucking along at a tolerable level of risk. And so I think that those dollars are doing good for the community, so I'd like to see that continue. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. First off, I want to give a quick shout out to Cy Leggett and Jason Leggett, the members of the community that stepped up with the help as well as with Meg Spear, who as a result of a number of the community members voicing that they want to contribute and participate and providing donations to the campfire victim. And for these three individuals, they stepped up and they coordinated a pretty massive reception of, you know, the various donation that came through the community. I think to the point where they needed assistance from the Elk Grove PD, I believe, chief. And, and that was pretty nice for the department to step up and assist them with, with that as well. This is the kind of love that exists in the community and I'm quite proud that, you know, for me, when I reached out to Cy and Jason, they quickly stepped up, both on a different note, our veterans. And I think that that's something for all of us to be proud of. So thank you for watching tonight. Thank you very much for, all three of you, for stepping up. The other thing that I like to report on is participated in a Locke Foundation fundraising dinner, which raises funds to support and preserve the historical Locke Town not too far from Elk Grove, which certainly has a lot of connection to the city of Elk Grove and the residents that came out of Locke. For those of you who may not know, Locke is a traditional Chinese town that contributed to the levees and the railroads in this region. Had an opportunity to participate with a Tree of Life service at the Congregation Benai Israel, completely filled with Sacramento residents. But what really was touching is seeing the community as a whole come together and denouncing those type of violent action, those type of hate crimes. It just doesn't belong here in America. And to see the number of elected officials that were actually there was really touching. Many of the folks who actually spoke, spoke from their heart and it is a nice reminder that we're all in this together. The other thing I'd like to add to Diwali is the fact that I think we are all dressed in ethnic wear, so that was really nice. And we have the pictures to prove it as well. So if you haven't seen it, go look on social media. I think that's something that is a tradition that will probably be continuing. Had an opportunity to participate with the Economic Development Department in the Innovative Awards Luncheon with Biz Journal. It was wonderful, besides the food, but I was thoroughly impressed with the number of companies that have, you know, innovation projects that is pretty profound. So thank you, thank you, Darrell, for arranging for that. Had an opportunity to participate in the East and West Health Fair with the Sacramento Chinese Cultural Foundation and the North State University, which is their effort of bridging the gap between East and West medicine. I think that certainly is pretty profound for a university that houses a pharmacy and also a medical school to be at the forefront of exploring, building a bridge between the two philosophies. Had an opportunity to participate in the Sing Tao Chinese Radio, which is newly unveiled here in Sacramento, in the Sacramento region. And for many of you who may know, they, for a long time, have been doing newspaper print and have now jumped into the radio program. And so that's just an added bonus to our rich community. And in regards to what Councilmember mentioned, Regional SAN, I'm real proud that the Regional SAN Board has upped the budget from $1.35 million to $2.5 million for the Sims Ranch and Nicholas Ranch Dairy Repurposing Project. This is pretty profound and, you know, and certainly in the dialogue, there was many directors that presented pretty unique ideas and, and introducing different venues in which we can pursue to fund this. But for me, I voted in support of it and I felt that it was something that would benefit the community as a whole. I think as we progress as a city, a lot of these special places are beginning to disappear. And for the Sims and Sims Ranch and Nicholas Dairy Ranch, I think it's important for the young people to understand that we come from a rich heritage of farmers and that's something that we can't let the youngsters forget. And this is something that I'm quite proud of and I'm glad the sanitation board saw it, that it beneficial to increase the budget so we can move on that project. And that is all. All right, next item.
Take us to Section 8, Consent Calendar Items.
We have a consent calendar. I want to open up a comment, seeing that no members of the public sign up to speak. Want to close the public comment. Counselor Delbra Shandar action.
Move, second.
Got a motion, got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close extension. All right, next item.
Take us to Section 9, Our Public Hearing. Start item, item 9.1, which is a public hearing to consider approving the light emitting diode replacement lamp upgrade project and authorizing a contract for purchase and installation of energy-conserving LED lamps for city facilities.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm Douglas Scott, your city's facilities and fleet manager, and I'm here to present item 9.1, the Light Admitting Diode LED Lamp retrofit project. This is a public hearing item. Over the past several years, the city has implemented a number of conservation measures to reduce energy demands in city facilities. Some of those examples were installing sensors in city hall offices and conference rooms, installing LED lamps in lobbies and restrooms in the building here at the City Hall campus. We adjusted the building lighting control module set points, so all unnecessary lighting is turned off at the end of each business day. We adjusted the working hours of the custodial staff, so cleaning is completed earlier in the evening or on weekend days. And last year, the city enrolled in an agreement with SMD for solar power through SMD's Solar Share Program. SMD operates an off-site solar full-take system out at Ranch Oseko, which delivers the power back to the city. In fiscal years 2017, the city participated in a SMD program called Complete Energy Solutions to retrofit all exterior parking lot and building wall packs for existing city facilities. That was Project FM 1702. A $50,000 balance remains from that project and we'd like to apply it to all existing facilities to do interior lamps with LED. And this project is eligible for the CES program through SMD, thus significantly reducing the cost. The only lights we won't be doing are these 10 above us because we all want to look good up here when we're doing presentations or at council. And SMD competitively hired Ecology Action through an RFP project to be the program administrator to manage the CES program. The total cost of the LED interior lamp retrofit project is estimated at $62,550 and the city's cost after SMD's rebates is $36,900 or 59% total project costs excluding contractor bonding and change order authority. SMD estimates the annual energy savings to be less than 154,000 kilowatt-hours annually with an estimated payback of upfront costs in about 2.1 years. A little information about the Complete Energy Solution project from SMD. It is designed to be seamless customer experience from energy audit to rebate. The project administrator hired Ecology Action. Staff performed an energy audit of all energy-consuming systems and provides a proposal to the customer documenting good retrofit opportunities. The PA provides proposals to customers that include applicable rebates. And these proposals include a price to implement the energy efficiency measures from a contractor known as a trade ally, meaning that they are participating contractors that work directly with the customers, which is the city. The PA employees cannot perform the construction work, so the PA cannot pay the trade allies for any construction work performed except for a customer's rebate. It is up to the customer to choose a trade ally to contract with for the work. And SMD then reimburses the PA based on the kilowatt saving completed and the, from the operational retrofits. And in support of one of council's current fiscal year goals, to foster a vibrant and diverse economy in Elk Grove oriented towards growing jobs and target industries, staff inquired if Ecology Action's trade allies were located in Elk Grove. They identified one, Youngkite Electrical and General Contracting, which also did the project for the exterior parking lots and building lights. This project would typically be subject to the California Public Contract Code and the city's purchasing ordinance. Government Code Section 421712 allows the city to dispense with bidding for these energy service contracts if the city council finds that a duly noticed public hearing, the reason why we're here. the reason why we're here, that the contract is in the best interest to the city and additionally makes findings certain of cost savings. It is staff's recommendation that entering into the proposed contract without formal competitive bidding is in the best interest of the city based on the three reasons. SMUD CES program was competitively bid, offering the city a guaranteed price. The expenditures of staff time, that's really my time and money, I'm sorry, city's money, to procure this project in-house is not likely to result in a better price or more advantageous outcome to the city. And because Youngkite Electrical and General Contracting is located here in the city of Elk Grove, there's an economic benefit to the city. And as noted, the proposed contract is also expected to save approximately $153,757 kilowatt-hours annually, thereby supporting the cost-saving findings required under Government Code Section 421217. In conclusion, staff requests the city council find that the entering into the proposed energy service contract is in the best interest of the city, that the city council authorize dispensing the formal bidding for this contract pursuant to Government Code Section 421712, and that the city council authorizes the city manager to execute the proposed contract. We're glad to answer. Any questions?
Any questions?
Not just a comment. Doug, is it, I can't remember, is this the first presentation you've given us personally?
No, I do like one a year.
Okay.
Usually about this time of year.
I mean, the quota. Appreciate it, and this is a, this is a great item. You know, anytime we can save electricity, it's, you know, it's a win-win.
Yeah, this is, we've managed to get all the low-hanging fruit over the years, and this is kind of like the last one, the biggest one, where we do all the lights in all our existing buildings. So, it's going to be a big project, but it's going to have a great benefit to the city.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this point, want to declare public hearing open. Want to open a public comment, and seeing that there are no members of the public sign up to speak, want to close public comment. Declare public hearing closed.
With staff's recommendation.
Got a motion, got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose abstention. And next item.
Take us on to item 9.2, which is actually three public hearings to consider the 46 annexation to Community Facilities District, or CFD 2003-2, for police services, the 52nd annexation to CFD 2006-1 for maintenance services, and the 26th annexation to Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2 for three projects.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am Kara Taylor Seaman, Finance Analyst here at City of Elk Grove. I'm here to present the public hearing for annexations to several of the city's special tax districts. As I've mentioned in previous presentations, the city does maintain eight special districts. The requirements are unique for each district and each project, and annexations into the districts is typically part of the approval project process, excuse me, for that project. There are three projects being presented for being, for your consideration tonight. One is the Gardens at Elk, the Gardens, sorry, the Gardens at Quail Run, Arco AM PM Car Wash, as well as Bruceville Point. And then the annexations are illustrated for you there. The Gardens at Quail Run is a residential project. They have 96 multifamily units, and it's located kind of southwest of Poppy Ridge Road and Bruceville Road. There are three annexations for that project. The Arco AM PM Car Wash is a commercial project of just under two acres, and there are two annexations for consideration. It's located at Elk Grove Boulevard and Bond Road. I'm sorry, Elk Grove Florin Boulevard and Bond Road. And then finally, Bruceville Point is an assisted living project with 117 multifamily units. It's located just south of Elk Grove Boulevard, off of Bruceville Road. And it is, for that particular one, most of the annexations were completed in 2006 when the project was owned by a previous owner. So the final annexation is needed just for stormwater. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions? There are no questions. Perfectly clear. Okay, at this point, want to declare public hearing open for CFD 2003-2. And want to open for public comment, seeing that there are no members of the public sign up to speak. Want to close public comment, and want to declare public hearing for 2003-2 closed. And I'm open for a motion.
Motion 1A. Oh, a motion, I'm sorry. Sorry.
No, it's good.
You guys are quick, and I turned it on.
That was good, that was fast. Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close abstention, and tabulation, please.
Of 96 possible votes, 96 affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. Measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Okay, you got a motion on A2. Got a second?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose abstention.
Motion A3, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annexed to Community Facilities District Number 2003-2, Police Services, Annexation Number 46, and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.18.010.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose abstention. All right. In regards to CFD 2006-1 Annex 52, want to declare public hearing open. Want to open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public have signed up to speak. Want to close public comment, and declare public hearing for 2006-1 closed. Motion, please.
Motion B1.
Got a motion B1. Got a second? And all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose abstention. All right, tabulation, please.
Of 98 possible votes, 98 affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure, and a resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Motion B2.
Okay, got a motion B2. Got a second?
Second.
Yes, and all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose abstention. All right, next motion.
Introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annexed to Community Facilities District Number 2006-1, Maintenance Services Annexation Number 52, and amending the Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.19.010.
Okay, got a motion? Got a second?
Second.
Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose abstention. All right. In regards to SWDF Annex 26, want to declare public hearing open. And want to open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public have signed up to speak. Want to close public comment, and want to declare public hearing for SWDF Annex 26 closed. And a tabulation, please.
There is no majority protest. Of 215 possible votes, weighted according to proportional financial obligation for each property, 215 affirmative votes were returned. The ballot approves, ballots approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining the levy assessments in the districts available for council consideration.
Okay, vote for a motion or a discussion?
Motion C.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose abstention. All right, next item.
Take us to Section 10, Our Regular Agenda Action Items and Recommendations, starting with item 10.1, which is to receive information and provide direction on a request to host an Elk Grove Martin Luther King Junior Day Parade.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kristin Lawrence with the Public Affairs Office, still getting used to saying. Tonight, we brought this item before you as a follow-up to a request that actually came in from a resident who's with us tonight. I don't know if he remembers it, but Randy Becker brought this forward on January 24, 2018. And there was some discussion at that time, and the council directed staff to do some research and some follow-ups. So, we're with you tonight to provide some information, to give you the opportunity to consider some possible options, and to provide staff with further direction. So, just as a bit of background, Elk Grove currently hosts 11 parades annually. A number of these are produced by our local high schools as part of their homecoming celebrations. But we also have a number of community parades. The Veterans Day Parade, which unfortunately, as you referred to earlier, was canceled due to poor air quality this year. But we do have a Holiday of Lights Parade that is coming up the Saturday after Thanksgiving. Our police and firefighters participate annually in three nights of Santa and sirens parades. And then in May, we have the annual Western Festival Parade. As I mentioned, there might be some familiar faces on the screen for you right now. These are all produced by schools or nonprofit organizations. So, the city has not produced a parade in the past or a march. But what we do for those events is we do coordinate with the organizers. We issue street use permits to close the roads. We provide, through our event sponsorship grant program, various types of support. Some of these include a cash contribution. We also provide in-kind police services and traffic equipment and management through our Public Works Department. And for those community parades, we enter some participation. We get engaged in various entries, as you can see from that picture. So, as I mentioned, the city has not produced an event like the one that was proposed before. We would need to identify a route and determine some staffing needs for that. A January event during Martin Luther King Junior Day, January 21, I believe it is this year. There is some weather consideration, so some of the planning that might be done, it could be rain or shine, but we could have a weather issue. And when we took a look at some of the other parades that we support, we took a look at the Veterans Day Parade as a budget example. They provide that kind of information through our event sponsorship grant program based on what they had shared as far as their equipment and supply costs and some of the other logistical needs, as well as the support that we already provide through our grant program. We estimate that it would cost about $24,000 to produce this kind of event ourselves. There are other Martin Luther King Junior Day celebrations in the region. I was happy to see and did get a chance to connect with him before, but Sam Starks with MLK 365 is in the room tonight. He's an Elk Grove resident and the organizer of one of the largest regional celebrations that takes place in the Capitol. There is a March and a Diversity Expo as a part of that event, and it's a very widely participated and very popular event. When we tried to do some research on other events in the region, we did find that there was an event that takes place at the Varsity Theater in Davis each year that's more than 20 years in production. And there's a breakfast event that is hosted in the city of Tracy, but we didn't find any other events that were taking place on a municipal scale at least within our neighboring jurisdictions, so Folsom, Rancho, you know, Gault. We didn't see anything like that. So, MLK's event tends to serve a regional need. So, they have a very large event. So, we presented to the council tonight some options. We also have Sam here, who might be able to provide a bit more information about their event. But we, we are looking for the council to give us some direction. Some possible options would be, you want us to move forward with producing an Elk Grove event. We need to hear that from you, if that's the case, so we can start production. You know, with the holiday season upon us, we, we need all the time that we could get to try and pull something like that together. Another option would be to sponsor the March for the Dream event. We could encourage Elk Grove participation more. We're preparing the content for our January/Febuary city newsletter right now. That kind of exposure could be included. And then we can add Elk Grove's presence to their March and Diversity Expo. The anticipated cost for something like that starts at $3,000 for their entry-level sponsorship. All of that would provide a good deal of exposure for the city, as well as the efforts that we would undertake. Or you could always consider some other options. But that's staff's presentation, and then if you'd like to hear a little bit more, I'd invite Sam to join us at the podium and to talk about his event.
Vice Mayor?
Hey, Sam.
Counsel, it's good to see you guys. It's the first time I've been in front of this great board. I had a chance to sit and catch the whole thing. It's one of my rare privileges. But the other privilege that I've had has been to kind of take over a tradition that has been now 38 years. And indeed, one of the organizers that jerked me into this is in the audience, and I hear that laugh. And we should all just give her a hand, because Ali Anne Murphy-Hassan is an Elk Grove resident who does a lot. And so, what we've done, we've taken, you know, again, we stand on the shoulders of great people. And we've taken Mei Li, I should mention Mei Li. I should mention Helen Westbury, Tom Burris, who's recently passed. And so, there's a lot of people that have contributed. We have a great board of directors. Many of them are your peers, and we couldn't do it without the region's support. It has gone from a neighborhood to a community to a city, now to a region. We are the destination place in Northern California. I like to say we're the largest participatory MLK event. LA still has the largest. It's kind of a parade people watch. We base ours on the Chinese adage, "Tell me I'll forget, show me I'll remember, but involve me, I'll understand." We want a level of understanding. We really want, it's amazing to see young people who may have some, you know, some issue maybe with law enforcement, to walk alongside and to see and to hold their hands and to talk. It really brings the community together. Like I said, we're now cresting at 30,000. But we're moving away from just the metrics of numbers, and we're looking at, for the last three years, we have this kind of concept called Walk With Me. And we said, well, how do you honor King? Not necessarily just to look back in memorial gaze and say happy birthday, but, you know, to put his ideas and practices, put his ideas and values into practice, and that's kind of what we've done. We've asked people to go online and invite someone that doesn't look like them, come from their background, cultural background, might have a different point of view, and ask them to walk with me, to share that 6.2 miles of walk in a courageous conversation. And it's been really fabulous. We get all kinds of feedback from people. They said that's pretty, pretty out there to do such a thing, but we see that's the move forward, because we're actually honoring King by putting his values into practice. So, with that, I know that there are, we've, this year, introducing this concept called the Season of Change, because we know one day, thus our name is MLK 365. One day does not change make. So, this first season is a season of understanding and human value. We have One Positive Project, OPP. It's about the season of action and impact, and then learning and sharing, and then lastly, acknowledge and celebrating, because we have to celebrate impact as well. So, that is our year. That is our, you know, we want to take and talk about the values of King in July, and September, and November, not just in January. So, when you think about what you want to do, think about not necessarily the man, although he's worthy to be praised. Think about the values behind the man, and I think that will guide you to what you should do. I hear tell from some of my folks back here that they, they have things that they want to do in, around that same period, the 19th, they want to have a dinner. I said it shouldn't be this or that, it should be this and. These are values that we're talking about. And so, if those values align with the values of Elk Grove, and I think they do, and I look at Elk Grove, this is the most diverse city in this region. And I, I think that it's this and. And so, with that, I'll take questions, throw tomatoes if you want.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Not a question, but Sam, unfortunately, my colleagues haven't had the, the experience of your presence yet, but, you know, I've heard you come to the RT Board year after year and present and sort of fire up the troops and rally support. And so, as I was reading through the staff report, and I came to the point to where MLK 365 says, please don't do your own parade. That kind of sealed the deal for me, because as an Elk Grove resident, if you thought this was a good thing for Elk Grove, you'd be, you know, bouncing off the walls in favor for it. But I appreciate the point you just made, because what I did read in this staff report is that other cities do other things. And I think we can add to, whether it's the same day, you mentioned dinner, so that when people are done walking, they could come down to something else at some other celebration. If you have ideas of how to spread that out over the, the, the calendar year, I would look forward to having that conversation. Next year, we're going to have a community center that's going to be a great Next year, we're going to have a community center that's going to be a great gathering space, that will actually provide for the city to put something in that's not an out-of-pocket expense per se. So, I want to continue the conversation, but for me, soon as I came across the fact that you say, "Hey, don't do what I've been putting my efforts behind," then that kind of put me in my place where I needed to be. So, I appreciate your comments on this. I appreciate your comments from the podium, and I look forward to hearing from the other speakers.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor. Thank you. You know, Sam, it's good to see you. Actually, Councilman Hume just stole my thunder, so to speak. So, but I just want to take the opportunity to commend you for the work that you've done with this organization. You've taken Alianne and May Lee's work forward and, you know, carried it forward. So, we really appreciate that. It's good to see you here down at City Council. Council member, the council members don't know that we've known each other for a long time, so it's really good to see you. Thank you for your work again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes, Sam. Pleasure having you here tonight. Very articulate and really appreciate your message, and it definitely comes across from the heart. I agree, you know, you're MLK 365, and I think that is a perfect event for us to partner with. But I also agree with the opportunity to use the other 364 days to put something together, and I think that's something we could also task our multicultural committee with.
Look forward to it.
Hi, Sam.
Hey.
You know, I love this march. We make our entire office walk it, holding our nice ARI banner, and we have Capitol walk it as well, too. And I know Alianne's in the office or in the audience there, and I appreciate going to this. And my staff look forward to being a part of this march, so I'm really glad to see you here today and advocating for us to continue to be a part of this effort here, because as you said, it's been over 30 years. And I know that other areas in the region have tried to do their own march, and it didn't work out as well, because everybody is really moving forward with this one here. And I know that in the Del Paso area, what, instead of doing their own march, what they did was a contingency plan, where they marched to a location, and from there, we all meet at Sacramento City College, and then we march on to the Capitol from there. So, I'm excited to hear this, because honestly, while I love our city here, and I think there are things that we can do to honor Dr. King, I did not want to miss out on being a part of this. And I know that Vice Mayor and I marched it last year, and we had a phenomenal time. We also saw several people from Elk Grove that were in the march, and we pulled this all together and started chanting Elk Grove and whatnot. And so, I, again, thank you for being here. Thank you, Alianne, for, I know you're going to speak a little later as well, too. But yeah, I, thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for doing this. I know it's a lot of work. You know, every community has their own march. I know the Vietnamese community does the parade, and that's a lot of work. So, I know how much work it goes into doing this and all your efforts, all these years. Additionally, I don't know if many of you know, but many years ago, ARI and MLK 365 partnered together on this march to do some scholarships for some of the recipients that were struggling financially, and we would do interviews out of my office. So, my heart is really for this event and for your efforts. And so, I'm all in with whatever it is that you both want us to do here.
Thank you.
Sam, I just want to say, from my recollection last year, the highlight really was the speeches right before the actual march. And there were a number of community leaders and also electeds that, you know, shared their own experience and, you know, just their own perception of how important this was. And so, yeah, I commend you and your group for continuing to do that. But, you know, I honestly, I think that Councilman Hume hit the nail right on it. I understand the importance of this, but I would look to supplementing and adding to. But, you know, I'm open to hearing any sort of suggestion. I see there's a couple of speakers signed up, but I'm open to the possibility. So, thank you so much for continuing to work.
Again, it's a regional march, you know, so it's not Sacramento. It's this region. That's what makes it special, I think. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, at this point, I want to open for a public comment. I see two speakers sign up. First one is CSD Director Rod Brewer. Are you still here, Rod? There he is.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members. How are you guys doing tonight? Hope you guys are doing well.
Congratulations to you, too, Director Brewer.
Still too early, but thank you. But I'm here tonight as a citizen. There's a lot of stuff we do at CSD, and we do have a cultural component, and what is done through MLK 365 is very consistent with that component. But what I'm offering tonight is an alternative that will supplement and help make the Martin Luther King Day weekend really substantive and culturally enriching. And so, as Sam had mentioned earlier, there was a mention of a meal, but that meal would come in the form of a prayer breakfast on the 19th. We do have space at Laguna Town Hall, Blackford Community Center, as well as the pavilion. But I'm envisioning Laguna Town Hall, because as what I've seen with the Festival of Lights, that venue not only can take on 500 people, but it can also facilitate a full-blown breakfast that everyone can feel comfortable at and feel good for. And plus, you have that courtyard area on to the side, so if there is spillover, that spillover can also be used as a meal space as well. From my humble opinion, I think this is a really good opportunity for Casuna CSD, as well as the city of Elk Grove, to join forces, have that show of unity that's consistent with the beliefs of Dr. King. And on top of that, it would be really good to actually have something that could be used as going forward. So, whether we use it at the new venue or use it at Laguna Town Hall in the future years, this is something that stays within costs with both the city and CSD. We work with community partners. We could work with MLK 365 to help generate the interest, but also work with other stakeholders that can provide the breakfast and also have the prayer component with the gospel component, because as we know, that's like, the church is very foundational to everything we do. So, that's what I would like to impart upon the council tonight as an offer. The wheels have been moving on the CSD side, at least as of lately, in trying to get the facility locked down, so there's very little worry of trying to scramble at the last minute. And figuring that we do it now in November is early enough, and we can, we could put something together like this quick enough, because as you know, we both have been very successful in putting together events at very short notice, but get very high quality on that. And utilizing the multicultural committee, as well as other committees within the city, we can really make this happen. So, that's what I'd like to offer, and I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Okay. Question? No? No questions, sir? Thank you.
The Malice.
Our next speaker is Marine Craft. Following Marine is Alianne Murphy Hassan.
Good evening again. I would like to ask the council to support MLK 365. It seems like everybody is excited and on board, but it would be good for Elk Grove to participate in this march. As Rod just said, a group of community partners have come together to put together an MLK breakfast, which will happen on January 19th of 2019, and we would like to invite the city to partner along with us. CSD will be one of our lead partners, but we would definitely like to work with the city, and if you have any questions, you can contact me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Marine. Alianne Murphy Hassan, please. Then Randy Becker.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, and congratulations, too. Stephanie, you pulled your numbers in this time. You weren't, it was wonderful to see an elected official sitting here on this board. My name is Alianne Murphy Hassan, resident of Elk Grove since 1991. You know me and my other positions as First VP for the Greater Sacramento NACP. I also sit on the Board for Care, the Council of American Islamic Relations, but I'm here today as a citizen of Elk Grove and a founding member of the MLK Communitywide Celebration, now known as MLK 365, and also a former board member. This event is a regional event. Oakland used to do one. They now come to Sacramento. A lot of the region around used to do an MLK. They now come to Sacramento. The people who come to Sacramento, the organizations who join in the march proudly bring their banners. I would love to see Elk Grove's banner in the march. We have coming down from Rancho Cudova. We have them coming down from Carmine. They come from all around. It's not Sacramento. It's not a Sacramento parade. It's a regional parade. It's a place where people come, they spend their hard-earned cash, they eat, they dine, they stay overnight. It's a destination, state destination, for a lot of people in this region. So, I would love to see Elk Grove as a partner in this process. Sam and his wife Char, they have the experience. Your city, your staff people won't have to do much of anything. They know how to coordinate with the police department and the fire department. They've got all that experience, so you don't have to worry about them coming and not knowing how to present and prepare you for your participation in the MLK 365 celebration. It is a wonderful event, and I'm glad to see you two were there last year, and I hope to see the rest of the committee, council people there as well. Doris Masui, she marched. She and I marched hand in hand. Ami Baro, he marches. All of the elected officials, state and regional, participate. So, why not Elk Grove? Why not Elk Grove participate, be a partner in this process? Sam and Char do a wonderful job at coordinating and making sure that the participants are safe. Like I said, they coordinate with the police and the fire department. So, yes, Elk Grove banner, big, wide, yes. I'll be walking behind that banner.
Alianne, it's good to see you. Just so you know, we did participate. We didn't have the Elk Grove banner, but it was the unity. Do you remember that?
That's right. Yeah, yeah, that's right.
And you certainly had the consensus of the council there. There was at least three of us, though. I think it's going to be easier for us. But thank you. Randy Becker. Following Randy is Constance Conley.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I do remember. I brought it up because I felt that, at the time, that the city was hurting in a lot of ways. And even though it's been almost a year, we still have reoccurring issues that we need to address. My comment of bringing it up was not necessarily to actually have a parade, but actually have a conversation. If you remember my comments about how we should have conversations with the community, CSD, the school district, talk, bring conversation to the multicultural committee. We now have individuals on a diversity committee. The chief has a cap committee. We have a number of committees in this city that we have bright people to just have a simple conversation. I think the parade in Sacramento is definitely a regional parade, and my comments were not to take away from that parade, but what could we do through conversation to add to it, or what could come out of it? Not necessarily a parade, but a get-together. Weather is always an issue with outside stuff during the winter months. It's always a gamble. Doesn't really matter whether it's November or January. We have a new, not civic center, but a community center being built. Civic Center, it's called Civic Center, by the way, Drive, may be a new destination as Elk Grove Flawn Road has been for many decades for Elk Grove Park. So, maybe in the future, Civic Center Drive may be the boulevard, so to speak, for new and upcoming events. Not to move old events, but to look at new events. And if you really look at the old maps, Elk Grove Boulevard and Elk Grove Flawn Road was the center of the city. Now it's changed. So, maybe some of the newer, added ideas within the city, maybe start encompassing the community center and maybe look at Civic Center Drive to add to that. It's also a street, if you look at it, could be coordinated in a safe way to where it's not encompassing major arteries that we now have to deal with, with the parades that we currently have. I think the breakfast is a wonderful idea, whatever community members come up with, whether it be with Martin Luther King or any other type of events. We should always look towards the community for conversation. We've got bright people here. And I think if we keep the dialogue open, everyone will feel wanted and not excluded. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Last speaker is Constance Conley.
Good evening again. I was remiss, congratulations, Stephanie and Pat. Wow, all these years, since 2006. Long time, long time. Anyway, I support whatever the community wants to do. I think a prayer breakfast would be wonderful. I love the idea of an Elk Grove joining the parade contingency. I would like to add maybe a suggestion that Kristin put her, all of her, I lost my train of thought, because of something I'm going to read you. Her creative talent and maybe do a T-shirt that we can all buy, and maybe half the proceeds go to an MLK foundation of some sorts. I would love to march in a parade that says, "I'm a proud resident of Elk Grove, and I support MLK 365," and have us all be down there. Can you imagine if we had 10,000, 20,000 people all wearing the same T-shirt from Elk Grove behind our banner? That might be quite a sight to see. We have a long way to go, and I don't know if any of you are apprised of what happened at the Elk Grove Unified School District Board meeting last night, but a year ago, we started with trying to educate and heal our race relations, and I think we have a lot more work to do, even with the diversity committee. I want to read you something that's a quote from a former SRO for Elk Grove Unified. His name is Dexter Powe. He said this last night, and this is from Elk Grove News, "Even worse, in 2016, you hired the Director of Safety and Security. That's the same administrator who referred to us African-American deputies as the Soul Patrol and then banned us from working. Now, I don't know about you, but that distresses me to no end. When I see Julius Lewis putting up our flag up in paradise, an African-American officer, if anyone were to refer to him as the Soul Patrol, I would literally come unglued. We should all denounce comments like that." So, that just tells me, if this is still happening in our city, that our African-American officers are being referred to as the Soul Patrol, we have that are protecting us day in and day out, especially at night, and actually protected my neighbor. You know, we've got from a gun. We have a lot of work to do, folks, and we need to do more with bringing this community together and making them understand that there is no place for racism in our city whatsoever. And I'm getting emotional about it, because it's very hurtful. It's very hurtful that words like that are still being said in 2018, when Dr. King gave his life for race relations, to make our country better. It's just sad. It's just sad.
Thank you, ma'am. That is our final speaker. That being the case, want to close public comments, council deliberation and direction. Members?
I support option two of the staff report, as well as whatever else we can do in concert with MLK 365, or Mr. Brewer, or other members of the community for other local events here that don't compete, that add to.
Yeah, I agree. And again, I'd like to see if we can pull the multicultural committee in on this to And again, I'd like to see if we can pull the multicultural committee in on this, too. I think these are the kind of things that we should task them with.
Yeah, I would concur with that, pulling in the multicultural committee in option two.
Okay. Good. All right. All in agreement. Yeah, let's go ahead and pursue that.
Council members, the multicultural committee met last night for their last time in 2018. They usually take a recess in December, so I can certainly include them through email correspondence, but we're not doing any other meetings for the remainder of the year.
Is it important enough to call a special meeting?
You guys tell me.
So I would offer, it sounds like Mr. Brewer has something planned for the timeframe that's time-sensitive, and that maybe we can task the multicultural commission for something more of an ongoing nature, perhaps even once our own facility is operational.
That works for me.
Rod, it seems like you guys are pursuing this already from the CSD standpoint, right?
Yes, I have. And what we've done is that we've reserved Laguna Town Hall for the 19th, Saturday the 19th, for the morning hours, so we can reserve it for the prayer breakfast. And so that process is rolling, and we're definitely open to working with you and the multicultural committee to really move the wheels going and making it happen.
Mr. Brewer, I have a question. So when you say you want us to partner with you, what specifically are you asking for? Are you asking us to help plan, help publicize, help monetarily? I mean, what exactly is it that?
Plan, publicize, logo. And with Laguna Town Hall, obviously, because of being a CSD facility, we'd be covered. And so what we would be doing is that we're working together to generate sponsors to help underwrite the costs of the breakfast. That way, it's less financial pressure for both of our agencies to really put in there. And we're, like I said, we're more than happy to work with your staff to make that happen.
Okay. Well, it sounds like there's a consensus for option two, right?
Yes.
So you got that, if you need to call a special meeting with the multicultural committee? I would say that's fine.
Option two included some information about sponsorship for March for the Dream. I would be looking for some cues from the council on whether there's a financial contribution involved.
I would be supportive of a financial contribution.
Yeah, do we know the sponsorship levels?
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Yeah, they're in the packet.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
They did those in your packet. The entry-level sponsorship is $3,000.
Yeah, that's the number I recalled, too. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right. I'm good with it.
Yep. Kristin, can you do it with the multicultural, just via email? Would that be enough for you to coordinate or not?
I think we can communicate with...
Councilmember Detrick, that creates a potential Brown Act issue with the multicultural committee. If it's one-way communication, that's fine, but if you're having communications back and forth through email, it's a Brown Act issue.
Okay.
Okay, so notice is required, huh? So, all right.
The city staff is happy to connect with CSD and determine what kinds of activities we can contribute to the cause and brief the multicultural committee on the involvement and bring them in as we get closer to the event in January.
Or, as was mentioned, if, as a thought, to piggyback on what Councilman Hume said, let the multicultural do something in the future, and if staff wants to work with CSD to pull that together. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, I think it makes logical sense, yeah.
That work for you, Kristin?
Yeah, that's definitely doable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to go. All right, next item.
Take us on to item 10.2, which consider adoption of a resolution declaring a shelter crisis.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Sarah Bontrager, your Housing and Public Services Manager. I'm here tonight to ask you to consider declaring a shelter crisis. The reason that we're bringing this forward tonight is because it would significantly expand resources that are available to our homeless residents. By way of background, the state created, with a total of $500 million statewide, the Homeless Emergency Aid Program with the lovely acronym of HEAP. It provides funding to quickly and efficiently increase homeless services. In fact, their push is really to get services out very quickly. They'd like all the funding to be spent by June of 2021, which does limit the amount of any new construction that could be done. And in order to participate in this, all jurisdictions have to declare a shelter crisis. So there are a few players that are involved in HEAP. The continuum of care entity, which is Sacramento Steps Forward, is a direct recipient of about 12.7 million, and the City of Sacramento is a direct recipient of 5.6 million. The County of Sacramento has the responsibility of administering some of the programs for the continuum of care. One of the really nice things about the HEAP funding is how it has brought together the county, the city, and the continuum of care in pursuit of a common goal. And they've also brought in many of the local jurisdictions. The city, I had the opportunity to provide feedback at several points throughout the decision-making process on how HEAP would be spent. Although we will not be direct funding recipients, our residents hopefully can still participate in this program. So some of the ways that the HEAP funds are being spent, the county is administering $8.5 million in their flexible rehousing program. Countywide, they anticipate serving about 600 people with a 24-month or up to 24-month rental subsidy and a whatever-it-takes case management approach to keep people housed. That is the program that I think would benefit our residents most. But the county has also set aside some money to do an emergency shelter expansion. They'll be adding 40 new beds in scattered-site shelters, which are similar to our transitional houses, small five-bedroom, six-bedroom houses throughout the community. And they're also adding seven new family shelter units. On the city side, they're looking at spending most of their money on a new triage shelter that would serve over 200 people. And then they'll also be looking at youth homelessness through the use of host homes, where people will host one or a couple of youth in their home. So the requirements for the shelter declaration are that jurisdictions have to do one. Without a declaration, our residents cannot be served in this program, and you have to do your declaration by December 31st. Unfortunately, there is no option for a late opt-in on this, so we either do it now or we don't participate. What staff has proposed is a time-limited declaration. Those are acceptable. Sacramento County did their declaration for one year, and Sacramento City did theirs for three months. So the form of the declaration is set by the state, and you make some statements that we've participated in local and regional efforts to combat homelessness, which we have and continue to do through our navigator, through our transitional housing, and other efforts. We make a statement that the number of homeless persons in Elk Grove exceeds the available shelter capacity, which is definitely true, and that that puts unsheltered persons at risk. And that we are, continue to be committed to augmenting shelter and service options for homeless in our community. So the benefits, as I see them, to declaring the shelter crisis are, number one, it increases the access for our residents. This is a new pathway that they have to get services and get housing. They might not be housed in Elk Grove. They might be. But getting them housed, as you've seen in this PowerPoint, there's a couple of pictures of some of the campments that our police department provided for me. Each time we go in and clean up one of those, it costs us about $1,500. And so getting some of those folks housed would be of real benefit to us financially as well as to them, as to the homeless residents. Another benefit, as I see it, is regional collaboration. Homelessness is a problem that affects all of the jurisdictions in this region, and we need to look at how we can solve it together. And one way is comprehensive service coverage. For one, that makes system navigation easier. People know where to go. There's one pathway instead of 10 different pathways depending on where you are. And honestly, it discourages people from moving between jurisdictions to try and access different services. If we all have the same services, then we have one approach, and there's not, you know, sort of a Swiss cheese approach where certain services are available some places and not in other places. Regionally, Sacramento County did their homeless, their shelter crisis declaration on October 16th, and Sacramento City did theirs on November 8th. Citrus Heights and Rancho Cordova are still considering it, and Folsom has indicated that they don't plan to declare a shelter crisis. So our recommendation is to adopt a resolution declaring the shelter crisis for a period of one year. And the alternative to this would be to take no action, but that would come at the expense of our homeless residents who would not have this pathway to services. So I'm happy to answer questions. Representatives from Sacramento City, Sacramento County, and Sacramento Steps Forward are also here if you have specific questions on their funding plans.
Any questions? No questions?
Let's have Sacramento Steps Forward and the county and the city, if possible, whenever they're ready to speak.
Great.
Sir, actually, I do have just one question. Why is Folsom planning to not declare a shelter crisis?
It's a good question, and maybe Sacramento Steps Forward could speak more to it. But one of the concerns from some jurisdictions has been that declaring a shelter crisis means that you cannot enforce your anti-camping ordinances. We do not have an anti-camping ordinance here, so that isn't a particular factor for us. But I believe that Folsom does have one, and so they may be looking at that. You know, outside of that, there was a decision that recently came out of Boise that says that you can't enforce your anti-camping ordinances anyway, but folks are still looking into that.
Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
Hey, Sarah, just, I think, and I talked about this before, but just sort of the public in here, being, declaring a shelter emergency, what, this enables the county and such to buy, purchase transitional homes here in the city?
So the county doesn't plan to buy any homes. The county, for their scattered-site shelter model, which they plan to expand that by eight homes, that is run much like our Meadow Grove or our Grace House in single-family homes that are not clustered in any particular area. So in theory, yes, one could be in Elk Grove. There's no indication that one would definitely be in Elk Grove. They have one through another program that's currently in Elk Grove, and it hasn't created any issues.
But it does allow them to spend that money here and set up, you know, shops, so to speak?
They could rent a house here and use it as a scattered-site model. More importantly, they would be able to rehouse residents. So most of the money is going towards this flexible rehousing program, and they would be able to house our residents, our homeless residents, in our community, when they could find housing, you know, an apartment that would accept them. And what we've seen and heard from our homeless residents is that they're here for a reason. It's not because we have an abundance of services, but they're here because this is their home. They know people here. They have family or friends. Their children go to school here sometimes. And so, you know, this would give us the ability to allow them to remain in the community, which can be a barrier to getting them housed. If they simply don't want to leave, then, because they have ties here, then it's very hard to get them housed if the only option is, you know, Del Paso Heights or, you know, North Sacramento.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Hume.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Who are the "they" when you say they could rent houses?
The county.
The county?
Mm-hmm.
And the county would do this irrespective of any jurisdiction of the city of Elk Grove?
The county could, but the county has been extremely collaborative with us on this proposal, and I would expect that they would, that they would work with us if they were going to locate a home in our jurisdiction.
Okay. Okay. Good. All right. Thank you.
Can we ask a couple of questions?
Step on up.
So one of the questions I was looking at is, a lot of the services and resources that both the city and Sacramento Steps, the organizations that are listed here are going to provide services to the homeless community that are here in our city. Are you looking to come out there and reach out to them? Is there going to be, are you going to be housed in here in our city? How are they to get to the services or resources that you have to offer? And then I think we're talking about, one of the questions was getting them housed here in rental subsidy. How long is that rental subsidy for? How do you anticipate, you know, after that subsidy is over, that they're not going to be back out in the streets again? I'm kind of wondering how that all works.
Maybe I could start. My name is Ann Moore. I'm the interim, sorry, Executive Director of Sacramento Steps Forward, and we are the, excuse me, applicant entity that was designated by the continuum of care. And I'll start with some general comments, and I think some of what you're asking really goes to my partner from the county, who can talk to you more about how this flexible housing program works. But the part of the proposal that is a flexible rehousing program, it actually, the access into that program is through mechanisms that are usually, they're already out there for homeless people. They'll be entering the program through shelters or through navigators. And so what we want to do is create, this is a new resource that'll be available to the homeless people who are already in those systems already. And they'll be working with some of the same nonprofit providers that they know right now would just have additional enriched resources so that we can help them with a whatever-it-takes kind of approach and really work with landlords, because the challenge is, in this tight housing market that we have right now, really helping to make sure that our homeless participants can actually enter into an agreement for rental for a certain amount of time. But I'd like to pass this over to Megan Marshall from the county, who has more experience in running this kind of a housing program, and she can talk to you about how long the subsidy works and what happens when it's been spent.
Good afternoon. Megan Marshall from the Department of Human Assistance for Sacramento County. I actually oversee our flexible supportive rehousing program, which is the umbrella program that will house the flexible housing pool through HEAP funding. My program is modeled after Los Angeles County's Housing for Health Program, which just recently, well, actually, a year ago now, had their RAN study published showing very, very successful outcomes in the model that they created. And the model really is two pillars of service. One is intensive case management services through contracted service providers, and those are the whatever-it-takes persons who do whatever it takes to keep persons stabilized, to reintegrate them into community, and to ensure their permanency in housing. The second pillar is the property-related tenant services, and that, those partnerships are meant to locate, secure, and maintain those ongoing relationship with landlords to house the individuals. Our program in Sacramento targeted 250 frequent users of our two most expensive county systems, and for us, those were jail and behavioral health. By targeting those two areas, it allowed for us to have a regional target population, not specific to the unincorporated county, but everyone goes to the same jail and everyone receives the same mental health services in our community. And so we've seen, our program will just be a year old this coming February, we have located 196 of the 250 individuals targeted for my program. And to date, what do we announce? It's 156 persons are housed. That's permanent housing. So we've seen some considerable strides within our two partnerships, Volunteers of America and Sacramento Self-Help Housing, who have been tasked with the property-related tenant services portion of my program. So with the time restrictions with HEAP, we felt as a community that it was imperative we build off programs that are experiencing success, instead of spending time and staffing and community resources and developing new programs. Sort of time is of the essence, and so FSRP, the flexible supportive rehousing program, is one of our county initiatives. is one of our county initiatives that is showing those early outcomes. So we would look to incorporate the HEAP expansion into the Flexible Supportive Rehousing Program under a smaller program, what we've called the Flexible Housing Program. So as was stated in your staff's report, that program would provide rental subsidies for individuals who are in existing shelter programs, or who are receiving case management services through navigation services. So those individuals would be linked to those subsidies. And that's, for our community, that's a very first time a lot of these folks are going to have access into those resources. So that's our design, so to speak, but we're still in implementation for policy development and identifying who those partners will be that will have access into the housing pool.
How do you find those houses?
So our partners are, as I said, Volunteers of America and Sacramento Self-Help Housing. They've done a tremendous amount of work in creatively identifying properties, specifically in the unincorporated county and as well as in the city of Sacramento, who have rental housing inspection programs. We're working with code enforcement to identify landlords who are problem property owners, but who are working towards reconciling their status as a problem property owner, who are, who have the best of intentions, but who, through resources or education, just don't have what it takes to do property management or tenant services. And so we offer mass leasing to those property owners. So it's a very, it's a highly incentivized and very robust program. So landlords who traditionally don't, wouldn't participate in receiving housing choice vouchers are incentivized to reconsider that position because we have landlord mitigation fees, damage funds, and onsite property management through our two partners.
And with the amount of funding you have, how many are you anticipating that you'd be able to house?
With the, under the flexible housing program, it's going to, it's approximately 636 households.
So of the 636, do you, how do you decide on, because we don't have as many homelessness as some of the other cities in our region here, so how do you determine who goes first?
So as was stated in your staff's report, the HEAP funding can only be used in jurisdictions and for persons in jurisdictions that have claimed shelter crisis. So in the event that you all decide to not declare, unfortunately, we would not be in a position to locate housing in the city of Elk Grove or house persons experiencing homelessness, receiving navigation services in the city of Elk Grove. So on the prioritization of the population in the jurisdictions that will declare, it is simply first come, first served. And the individualized case management component through intensive case management services is really what will drive the period of time that a person can receive a subsidy. We're building safeguards in our policies now to ensure that if a person is identified as truly needing permanent supportive housing resources and cannot be stably rehoused through a time, a time-limited program such as this, that those individuals will have a safety net to fall back on, either through permanent supportive housing in our continuum of care, or through the core program of the Flexible Supportive Rehousing Program.
But it's on a first come, first served basis, is what I heard.
We're doing--
Let's say we declare, and then it would just be on a first come, first served basis. So potentially, we can declare, but none of our homeless population here gets served because there's such a greater number of homelessness in the city of Sacramento.
And so the, a lot of the policy development is still in its infancy. We're going to our board of supervisors on December 11th with our proposal to even accept the funding of HEAP. And I'm hearing some murmuring. Okay, just in case I miss anything. But we'll be going to our board on December 11th with a proposal, but we are working behind the scenes now in the policy development to strategize, one, who, what services are required to be in shelters or through navigation services in order for those persons to be invited to participate in the FHP. As I understand it, you all have a navigator in the city of Elk Grove who is contracted with Sacramento Self-Help Housing, and that is one of our administering entities for the FHP. Their navigation services is one that, as well as Sacramento Steps Forward's navigators, are the ones that we're looking to model, sort of the requirement of being eligible to apply to FHP. So it's still in its infancy, but--
Vice Mayor.
I wanted to follow up on your housing choice program. Did you say that's a pilot program, or has it been around for a while?
So we're, so the housing choice voucher program is formerly known as Section 8, and that's administered through Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency.
Yeah.
That's been around for a very long time.
Right.
But our work, our work with HCVs, as well as the city's work with HCVs, is just about a year old.
Okay. And are you getting much success in that, in terms of getting new landlords willing to accept housing choice vouchers?
Yeah, happily we are. It's been, it's been an issue in our community for a very long time, but just been, you know, a lot of recent publications on, well, just because you have a voucher doesn't mean you can use the voucher.
Right.
It doesn't mean that your circumstance of homelessness will cease. But through work that we've done collaboratively with the city of Oakland, as well as Los Angeles County, it really opened up new avenues of dedicated resources to incentivize participation. The largest incentive we've seen so far with new landlords coming on board has been because they are not responsible for the property. We're doing property management onsite. Case management services are also onsite, so it really reduces their concerns about, you know, serving a population through HCVs.
Yeah. Thank you. Sarah and I were talking about this, so I'm so glad to hear this. We'd love to try to incorporate that more into our community as well. Thank you.
Happy to talk more.
Excellent. Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you. Do the HEAP monies come with any low barrier or no barrier to entry restrictions?
I'm Emily Halcon with the city of Sacramento. I'm the homeless services coordinator. And yes, one of the requirements of the HEAP money for any program is that it must be housing first. And that is defined essentially as low barrier, you know, optional services, no tendency dependent on your participation in programs. So it will require that any program funded in any city or county subscribes fully to the housing first philosophy.
Good. Okay. Any additional questions? No? We're good. Thank you. Right, at this point, I want to open for public comment. I have one speaker sign up to speak from SAC Self-Help Housing, Derek Correa.
Hello. First off, I want to say thank you for addressing this very pertinent issue today. As we know, there's 4,000 people in Sacramento that are sleeping on the street tonight. Quickly, I want to express SSHH's position on this measure, which is simply in support of it, to increase the resources, to utilize our resources in the area, to help more people, to give them more homes, to support them. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Nope.
Awesome. Thanks a lot.
Yep. Thank you. There are no additional speaker, and so want to close public comment. Councilor Breschon, direction. Members?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and lead off. That last little bullet point sealed the deal for me. Here's my issue with this, and this is a very touchy subject, because we're talking about people in need and communities of people in need. But, you know, I firmly believe that there are, you know, roughly four-ish categories of folks who are without housing. The mentally ill, the substance abuse issues, which could be connected to the first category, rogue individuals who simply don't want to conform to society and live in areas where they have to abide by rules, and then the folks that truly are in need and can be transitioned out and back into different forms of housing, different levels of productivity in society. And I just see that low barrier requirement, to me, spins that whole thing out of control. If you're not addressing issues that are potentially contributing to their homelessness on the way into a program, you're potentially, in my estimation, disincentivizing folks who would be able to come and take advantage of those programs for a short amount of time. And so that, coupled with this, the issue that I just, I'm not comfortable having, you know, a gun held to my head and said, "You got to pass this by December 31st, or else you miss out." And I don't even know what I'd be missing out on at this point. You know, we have money, grant money that we received directly from the state that we've not fully allocated and figured out what to do with, whether it's potentially buying more houses, the tiny home concepts, or what. And now I feel like I'm in the sort of, you have to pass it in order to read it situation, that I don't even know what I'm potentially getting or missing out on. So, I mean, I hate to sound callous, because it's a group of people who need help out of their situation, but I just, I don't see throwing money and roofs at the problem without the wraparound services, without addressing some of those underlying contributing factors as being a path forward. So I can't support this.
I have a question for Sarah. Our, what, as Councilman Hugh mentioned, we have money from the state already. So what would this provide you that you can't use right now?
So it provides a pathway into a regional, it provides a regional approach. This program, hopefully, will be available largely countywide, city of Sacramento. And it provides one more service pathway. We are still figuring out what to do. We will be bringing more back to you on tiny homes. We will look at, we also have, you know, to bring back to you, looking at how we can use some of that money for permanent supportive housing in coordination with one of our apartment developments. But this is another pathway, and it, you know, it really helps if we can provide consistent services across the county. One of, one of the concerns that we hear expressed a lot is that people may be coming to our jurisdiction because they want to access services. You know, statistically, there's some debate about whether or not that is actually the case. But when you have the same services across a broad area, people aren't likely to move elsewhere to pursue them. So the regional collaboration here is a key piece of it. I think that, you know, on the, on the housing first issue, the low barrier entry, there, I would like to clarify that there are wraparound services. That's the whole point of housing first, is that you do the wraparound services. The idea there is that it's much easier to deal with your substance abuse issue or your serious mental health issues when you know where you're going to sleep that night, when your caseworker can find you and take you to your appointment. And so, you know, we've, it's tough to see which comes first, but, but we've, at the national level, studies have shown that having that housing first makes people more likely to work on their issues than if they have to do the work to get housing.
Okay. And so do you think having, you know, if folks are there homeless now, here in Elk Grove, if they can't get service, if we're part of this program, then they can go, I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying to wrap my mind around, this is a regional program, and we're trying to figure out how Elk Grove is going to benefit, but part of a regional program. But these services are, they're going to be here in Elk Grove, they're serving our homeless population?
So our navigator would be a key referral pathway into those services. We have a newer navigator, and he's, he's really very excellent. He's been collaborating closely with our police department. And, you know, between the navigator and our police department, I feel confident that we could recommend some of those folks that are the biggest users of public services, of our police department's time, of our public works' time to clean up sites, that we could prioritize getting those folks into this program and getting them housed and off the streets. You know, we are not obviously going to take all 600 spots in this, but I think we could, I, I think we could get our fair share of those spots.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Detrick.
Yeah, talking about being a regional approach, one of the things we had talked about in past meetings relative to the homeless situation, how we could work with the county with some of their vacant facilities. Have we made any progress with any of that?
So the county, the county has not identified any facilities that would be appropriate for a big shelter facility. Their strategy has been actually similar to our model, which is to rent, rent single-family homes and do smaller-scale shelters in more locations. So we, you know, that, that's a topic we can continue to explore with the, with the county, or we could implement locally as well. And then also, we have, I have talked with SHRA, the Housing and Redevelopment Agency, about whether there's an opportunity to partner on some apartment complex funding.
Well, you know, I've been a big supporter of doing a regional concept, but to just cherry pick homes in, throughout Elk Grove, I can't support that.
Member Wayne?
So for me, I come from the service providing, and I serve a lot of the low-income families. But, you know, hearing that there's enough for 636, and it's on a first come, first served basis, I just, I want to guarantee that our community here is going to get served. And I've heard before that our homeless population is a little more well-off than some of the homeless population in the city of Sacramento. And so that, to me, says we may not get our fair share of, or we may not, we may, we may not get any of the 636, or we may get some. I just, I believe in providing services to this population. I know we have a lack of it here in Elk Grove. I just feel like this is a little rush. I would like to see a little bit more. I wonder why the city of Sacramento is only doing this for only one year, when their homeless population is off the chart. And so unless I know for sure that our community here is going to get served, our community here is going to get the resources that they need, our homeless population, then I can support it. I'm not, I'm just not necessarily sold on this yet. I don't know if anybody from the city of Sacramento can speak on this or not, but I--
I think you're specifically asked about why our declaration was so short. So our declaration currently is for three months, and I would agree that was very short. That was a decision made by our city attorney, so I certainly don't want to represent, you know, their viewpoints. I will say, though, at the last council meeting, when it was adopted, that was a point of discussion from our public, rightfully so. And our mayor and council member committed, you know, recognized that our crisis is much larger than, than three months. We are not going to be out of a shelter crisis in three months, so I would imagine that this will be an ongoing conversation at the council. If you read the text of our declaration, it aligns with the winter months and recognizing that winter is an especially troubling time. So I don't believe that that's the last conversation we'll be having, and I do think that's a fair point. It was brought up by many people in the public.
Thank you.
Okay. Sarah, I got a quick question for you.
No, Sarah.
And you can answer if you'd like to. But my, my question is, the way I see this is, this is one thing in addition to the many things that you do, and also as the region. Is there any disadvantage if we were to proceed with this? Is there any negative marks on the city as a whole, from your perspective?
From my perspective, no. The concern that's been expressed consistently as this, as the HEAP program was rolling out, was concerns about enforcement of an anti-camping ordinance. And since we don't have one, and haven't really explored creating one, in any way probably couldn't enforce it anymore either for, for the decision that came out of Boise, I don't really see a meaningful downside to this. It's another tool in our toolkit that, you know, at a time when the more tools, the better. You know, even jurisdictions that have money are still struggling to, still struggling to serve their homeless. And, you know, I, personally, I do the case conferencing meetings with our nonprofit partners. Every two weeks, we have one and hear about the new people in our jurisdiction who our navigator has had contact with. A lot of families. And it, you know, it's heartbreaking to hear about four kids and a mom living in a van. Or, you know, or about the people who are seriously mentally ill, but who just have, have nowhere to go and just keep moving around our city. And so from my perspective, the more tools, the better.
They're here already.
The homeless?
Right.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Vice Mayor.
So, another question I had, and forgive me, I don't recall, but the proposition that talked about taking money from mental health services to provide housing for homeless, I think that passed, did it not?
It did. That was Prop 2.
Prop 2, yeah.
It did. And so, the, the plan on that is that the, there's a program, it will be called No Place Like Home, and that will fund mostly new permanent supportive housing resources.
Okay.
The county is leading the charge on that. They have a homeless, a draft homeless plan that's out on the street right now, which I've participated in workshops on and provided comments on. And it will probably be early next year that a NOFA is released at the state level for those funds.
Okay. And how, what, do you know what kind of magnitude of funding we would get out of that? In other words, if you got that, do you still need this?
We need everything we can get. So, that money is really targeted right now towards permanent supportive housing. That takes a while to construct. You have to have a project, and this funding is more focused on immediate. Let's get folks into housing that already exists, let's get them off the streets. There's absolutely a need for both approaches. We do not have enough permanent, permanent supportive housing in this region, but we also don't have enough rehousing resources either.
So, hypothetically, this is a regional approach, so we, we build a shelter here in Elk Grove to house 600 people, let's say, no, or...
So, we are not, nothing here is proposing building a shelter.
Okay.
I, I don't think we will be building. There's no, so this, countywide, there's money to house about 600 people in apartments throughout the region.
Yeah.
The vast majority of those apartments are going to be outside of Elk Grove. Even the ones that Elk Grove's homeless go into are probably, given the realities of the rental market, pretty likely to be outside the city of Elk Grove. But we can't get any Elk Grove person into this program without the crisis declaration.
Okay.
And there's no funding that goes to us. This is really just declaring, then the county in Sacramento steps forward and the city comes in to assist the homeless population that we have here on a first come, first served basis and, right?
Effectively, yeah. No funding comes directly to us, but we do have our own navigator, and our navigator would be a key referral pathway into that. And I think, you know, our navigator, because we have a somewhat smaller homeless population, our navigator has really frequent contact with a lot of our, a lot of our most vulnerable homeless. And I think that, that with the first come, first served program, actually, I think that design advantages Elk Grove more than it disadvantages us. Some of our homeless may not be as vulnerable as other homeless, but with a competent navigator who can really devote the time to seeing people get served, first come, first served is very workable.
I, I just, I'm always hesitant when, you know, the, this short timeline, you know, is really, it just, I mean, it makes me a little suspicious. So, I just want to, I just, you know, I mean, I'm a little more cautious about this because anytime somebody wants you to sign on dotted line, you know, today, or that's it, you know, you, you gotta wonder, right? So, maybe someone can explain to me why the, the urgency and the hard deadline and there'll be no opportunity to opt in later, I mean, what is the...
The legislation that was passed that allocated the $500 million for the HEAT program required, set the timelines and required the shelter crisis designation. Frankly, I, I don't think that requiring the shelter crisis declaration from all jurisdictions was probably the best move of the legislature, but that's what they did and they set the timelines. And, and so, we're, we're kind of stuck with what they, what they, the bill they wrote.
I understand. Okay.
Go ahead, Councilman Hugh.
Yeah, and again, I hate to harp on it, but it's that ambiguity with such a hard deadline that has me feeling uncomfortable, because now I just heard something completely different from you, Sarah, with respect to the number of apartments that would be identified and that those apartments might be outside the city of Elk Grove, when one of the reasons that we would want to participate in this is because recognizing that the homeless population in Elk Grove has a connection to Elk Grove.
Yes.
So, I mean...
Some are willing to be housed outside of Elk Grove and some really want to stay here. And we're willing to house people wherever we can find housing for them and where they're willing to go.
Absolutely. Lottable, for sure. But what I heard you say before was that they would identify houses that could be converted into the small transitional housing like the Grace House and the Meadow House, and that, that they would work with staff necessarily, but not necessarily that it would be a council decision. And, and I guess what I'm trying to drill down to is that the last time this came up where we looked at doing that, there was strong neighborhood opposition and...
You're right.
I don't want to bear the brunt of decisions I didn't make.
I, I totally understand that, and I think that there's, I, I think one source of the confusion here is that there's two different programs here. There's the flexible supportive housing program, which is the 600 that we keep talking about. That's mostly aimed at housing people in apartments here and there where they can find them. The county also is looking at expanding their emergency shelter capacity, and that is about 40 bedrooms over eight houses countywide that would be operated similar to our transitional houses. There's no, there's no guarantee that any one of those houses would be in the city of Elk Grove. They are rental houses, they do not buy them, and so, you know, if, in the event that there's a problem with, with one of those houses somewhere, you know, the lease simply doesn't get renewed and they move on. Is that...
Sorry, one last question. So, what, what, because we can't direct the recipient funding, what input do you have?
So, I am, I am very fortunate to have a good working relationship with, Sacramento steps forward with the city of Sacramento and with the county of Sacramento, and also with our other, other small cities, Rancho Cordova and Citrus Heights. I, I'm also fortunate that I am the vice chair of the Continuum of Care Advisory Board, and so, I have the, the ability and opportunity to weigh in on policy at the continuum of care level.
Okay. Thank you. Well, that, that gives me some comfort, for sure. Okay. Well, I, you know, I struggle with this because of the reservations I articulated earlier, but I also recognize, I mean, there's a huge need out there, and I've always been very vocal about trying to get ahead of this issue for our city, because I know, I know Sacramento County, Sacramento City are, you know, are struggling right now. And we have a growing issues in our city as well. I mean, it may not be as dire, but it is indeed increasing. And so, you know, I, you know, I, I know, knowing Sarah's been a big part of this right now and on the forefront of it, I'm willing to go ahead and get on board with this.
Okay. Is that a motion, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'll take, I'll make the motion.
Okay, and I'll do the second, and this is the reason why I'm doing it, because you asked for additional tools. I'm providing this to you. I know that you have a, a good head on your shoulders, and I know that your approach makes logical sense. I trust you in this. I think it's important to acknowledge the fact that they, the homeless community is here already. If it may be that they have ties to Elk Grove or not, the fact of the matter is that we have to address it. And this is just, you know, a part of reality, and I, the other thing that stuck in my mind is this is part of a continuum of services that would be provided to the homeless, and that's extremely important. These are additional tools that you need, and I'd be happy to, to second that. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, oppose?
No.
I got two no, abstention?
I, I would like, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm on the fence. I mean, I, I'm gonna say yes on this. I'm not necessarily saying yes because I think it's wonderful and great. I think there's a lot of things that need to be ironed out on this, but I also want updates on this as well. I completely disagree with you that we're at the advantage of being able to get some of these, because I provide service to this population. I know who is moved up to the front and forefront to receive the services before, and it's those that are in the most dire needs. And as I said earlier, our homeless population is not as bad as the city of Sacramento and, and North SAC and Del Paso and, and those areas. And so, I feel like we may be overlooked because they need it more than we do. And so, anytime we can provide extra services and resources to folks here in our community, I'll, I'll be all for it. I just, I would like updates on this and how...
Sarah, and I think, you know, I, I support you tremendously, but, you know, and we, and we've got all the players in the room right now for SAC City, SAC County, and Elk Grove. We really need to put together a regional facility. I mean, shameful that the county's got at least two facilities that are potential that could be refurbished and, and house a large number of people, and nobody's moving forward to that. Nobody wants to make a decision and use either one of those facilities. We don't have any facilities in Elk Grove, otherwise we would do something, but we don't. So, I'd really, really like to see the collaboration between all the agencies to make that happen.
Can I ask a clarifying question of either the...
Yeah. Councilman Hugh?
Or Sarah? Did that include a delimited timeframe? And if so, what is the period?
So, the resolution was good for one year.
That is subject to revision by the council. You could terminate it earlier or you could extend it within that year period.
Well, that's good to know. So, if we, if we chose to terminate it earlier, we would just bring it forward to council? Okay. So, maybe, Sarah, could we did a quarterly report from you on things and we can, we can make, determine whether we want to continue or not?
Okay. For the record, we have three yes and two no's.
All right. Good.
All right. Okay. Next item.
I'll take us on to item 10.3, which is receive and file status report on strategic initiatives related to city council goals for fiscal years 2017 and 18, and provide direction on 2019, 2020 city council retreat.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Christopher Jordan. Running through this real briefly, as you'll recall, every odd numbered year, we do a council retreat.
Christopher, hold on, I, I need to take off. I've got a, a emergency from work I need to take care of.
Be safe. Councilman Detrick.
So, the bi, biannual retreat gives us an opportunity to review and update your goals for the city and identify strategic initiatives to implement those goals, basically some work program elements for staff. We report on the quarterly stat, we report on the status of those initiatives quarterly, so we have for you this evening in your packet, the quarter ending September of this year. I won't go into detail on that, but if you have questions, staff is available to answer them. We do want to jump ahead to planning next year's retreat. There's a bit of discussion items or direction we would like to receive from you this evening as we prepare for that. These deal with three areas, the topics for the meeting, schedule and format, and potential dates. Looking at topics, there's been a number of conversation pieces at various council meetings over the last year and a half or so, the potential topic areas. Typically, we always include the budget as part of this. Dubtailing with the retreat process, we do a biannual budget component that should be, you'd see that in the May-June timeframe, so we would obviously cover that. We've heard from you about transportation issues, so that's a tentative item on our list, and we'd like to know if there's any others you'd like to include on there as well, or any other specifics on the transportation side, if there's some focus that you'd like to give to that, so staff can prepare accordingly. In terms of schedule and format, typically, the last two sessions have focused on single day sessions, typically beginning around 3:00 PM, extending into the early evening hours. An alternative approach, given whatever topics you'd like to cover and the level of detail, we could look at doing a multi-day retreat. Concept here is maybe we do an evening on, say, a Friday, and then pick it up again late morning on a Saturday, including in the mid to late afternoon. So, we could do that, or we could do some other version of an approach that is a pleasure of the council. And finally, in terms of dates, historically, we've used dates in the month of March, either first part or ending part of March. We recommend moving that up into late January, early February. This allows staff to better align the outcomes of the retreat with the budgeting process. So, we are looking at two weeks, the end of January, first part of February, that are here on the screen, the week of January 21st, the week of January 28th, for availability, depending on what format you'd like to see that done. With that direction, staff will begin the preparations for it, a lot of work to do there, and start getting a venue identified. Includes presentation this evening, can happy to answer questions and receive any direction you have.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Christopher. I want to do a couple of things. One, I've been talking to Christopher about the transportation issue, and I, I really think we need to dedicate a substantial amount of time for that. I'd like to see a overall vision for a multimodal system that includes, I think there's a, for the public too, I think there needs to be some communication of perceptions on things in terms of transit, in terms of, you know, other, other modes, touching maybe upon autonomous vehicles and where, where we're going with that, just so people know what we're considering, we're considering all gamuts, you know, all, all different things. And then, that connection of funding to land use, you know, our requirements of the MTP for SAICOG, I think there's a lot of education that can occur around that, that would inform the decision making that we do for a vision for a multimodal system, as well as the economic development perspective on the multimodal station. There, I think there's a lot that warrants a substantial amount of time on that. And so, overall, I think the retreat, so you don't get brain fried, I think it, it would be beneficial to have a two-day retreat. And I would like to include, you know, we talked about homelessness just now, I think we should have a conversation about that. So, we're not just talking about folks that are homeless and, but also folks that are on the brink in, in how we're going to provide services to support them so they don't become homeless. And then, how that dovetails into our arena numbers and, and the affordable housing that is getting, that needs to get built around the city. And so, you know, taking a, a big picture view of that. And then, also, I, I was going to mention this earlier, but I thank Randy Becker for bringing it up. I think we need a, a discussion on emergency preparedness and resiliency as a community. We may not, we have some flood risk on the west side of town, but, you know, we have train tracks that run through the city, so you, you know, derailment, emergency response around those, that type of disaster. I think that, that, that type of conversation and preparation needs to happen as well. So, because of all those different items, I think it does warrant a multi-day, you know, finally touching in upon, I think we did a great job a couple of years ago with our visions and mission at the last council retreat, so I think a kind of a touch back into, into those, make sure we're still on the right track is good. But all of that combined together, I think is worthy of a, you know, a two, a two-day, maybe not two full days, but at least two days. So, that's, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, Chris, I would support a Friday evening and a Saturday, and February the 1st and 2nd looks good for me. Anyone else? I'm, I'm open on the evening of February the 1st and all of Saturday, the 2nd.
I'm good with both those days.
Yeah.
Everybody comfortable with the topics?
Yeah.
Are we doing an all-day Friday? Is that what you're proposing?
Probably, evening is best for me, and then all of Saturday, I'm open.
I can't do Saturday, all-day Saturday. I can do Saturday morning.
Can we do like maybe a, a four o'clock, you know, to eight o'clock Friday, and then, and then a Saturday morning till like, I don't know, 2:00 or something?
Yeah.
Nine to 2:00 or something like that?
Yeah. Are you completely blocked out on Saturday?
Uh, they leave by 4:00, so I could do that.
I think that should be sufficient, huh?
I'm sure we can find a way to make that work.
Yeah. So, Councilmember Hugh?
While he's looking, Christopher, if we could, I think we just need some industry experts as well, you know, on, on some of those topics to kind of set the stage. I know you guys are good too, but whatever support you need.
Understood.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go along with that. I, I think we could have kept it to it one day, but...
I think we just get brain fried, that's all.
Of course, you might want to check with Member Detrick, see if he can do those days.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, want to open for public comment. No members of the public sign up to speak. Want to close, and let's move to the next item. sign up to speak. Want to close, and let's move to the next item.
Next item would be item 10.4, which is to receive a presentation on recent economic development activities.
Mayor, members of the council, I know it's been a little bit of a long evening, and I think Daryl has somewhat of a long presentation. He's excited to talk to you all about all the great economic development things that have been going on. I'd like to just ask if you'd like him to make the presentation this evening, or carry it over to another meeting, maybe do it at the beginning of the meeting?
Let's carry it over.
Carry it over.
If he speaks more than five minutes tonight, I swear I'll fall home.
To hear more?
If I can jump in, there is one member of the public signed up to speak, Angela Perry, on this item. I don't know if you want to field Angela. She is here and was waiting for the item.
Angela, would you like to speak, or you want to defer to the next meeting?
I'll make it quick. I promise.
All right.
Hi, Angela.
Hi. Angela Perry, Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce. First, I wanted to congratulate Councilmember Nguyen and Councilmember Hume and Mayor Lee for your successful campaigns. Congratulations. We look forward to working with you further. On behalf of the Board of Directors, we just wanted to take this opportunity to commend the staff of the city's Office of Economic Development for their efforts. Daryl recently spent some time with the board at our annual planning retreat, where he had, we had the opportunity to ask questions and share feedback, which was very much appreciated. We have plans to continue that open dialogue on a regular basis moving forward. As you know, the chamber's mission is very similar to the Office of Economic Development's goals. We have worked with Daryl and Rachel, and now Louise, on business walks and workshops, among other things, and look forward to additional partnerships in the near future, where we can work together to enhance Elk Grove's economic future. And, oh, sorry.
Oh, you broke it. We're gonna have to bill the, the chamber.
On another note, I wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow is our sixth annual Elk Grove Food Bank, Food Drive, and Mixer at 5:30, and I hope you'll all join us. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, ma'am. And there are no additional speakers. Want to close public comment, and let's move to the last item.
The last item is 10.5, which is review of city council ad hoc committees. Per the norms and procedures, we bring this back to review all ad hoc committees in November. One item, when staff did the review of the current ad hoc committees, one of the recommendations that we have was to look, that we have two ad hoc committees that relate to economic development. And one of the recommendations from the staff side was just as the cleanest cut to combine those into one ad hoc committee. We thought the cleanest cut is just terminate both of those and then recreate a new economic development ad hoc that encompasses all both topics that would be under those ad hocs. But as the cleanest cut, then that helps us with the assignment of who would be serving on that ad hoc committee. But that was a consideration that staff saw when looking at the list.
I have a suggestion. How about we, you know, I mean, we still have state legislative discussions, right? I mean, couldn't we just keep that first ad hoc as such, and then remove the economic development and keep the economic development ad hoc?
Yeah, I would agree with that, Mayor. And, you know, I know Councilman Detrick and I were talking about that as well, in that same exact manner.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right. Other than that, I don't have any additional suggestions.
We can make it state and federal, too, if that would be okay with that.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
I don't know if that needs to be, but...
And the diversity ad hoc committee, I know that we created that for the audit. Is that something that we want to continue to, to keep? I think we finished the audit, and staff was going to come back in six months to present. I wanted to see if that's something we still wanted to, to keep or not.
I would defer to staff on that one. Do you feel like there needs to be an, an additional check-in as we ramp up sort of the implementation component of the strategy?
I don't necessarily think so, but I, I do think that we owe the community group a report back in six months with what we've done so far.
From the ad hoc, or from staff or council at large?
From staff.
Okay. Then I would support the dissolution of that ad hoc committee.
After the report back to the community, or where?
I think we did, I think we left it with the community members, that they would be notified when the council meeting was, the council agenda item was publicized before that.
Yeah, my, I can't quite remember, but for some reason, I remember that there was a discussion about bringing the ad hoc committee together. I don't know whether it included the council members or not. Kara, do you remember? And I don't know...
The council members are the ad hoc committee, but they have the community group.
And for, for my sake, you know, a little bit of confusion as to including members of the community or not, in that I don't know whether we want to...
Well, it's my understanding that the, the diversity ad hoc committee is comprised of council members Nguyen and Hume.
Okay.
And then they had brought together a group of interested community members
Okay.
that they met with periodically. We recently had a meeting with some of those individuals, maybe a month and a half ago, and at that meeting, we said that we'd be reporting back six months from when we came to council at the end of August with our progress on the inclusion strategy. And at that time, I had committed to them that we would, you know, notify them when that staff report would go forward and make sure that they were included, so they knew the night the council would hear the item.
Okay. Would you, members, be comfortable with sitting this out until the report back?
Yeah, if you want, you want to leave it in place. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Because I mean, I certainly don't want them to come saying, wait a minute, you guys are jumping the gun. You guys already dissolved it. So it sends that wrong message, right? So, all right. Anything else? Yeah, we're good?
Good.
All right. We're good. Jason, you got all that?
We're good.
Okay. And there, want to open public comment. No members of the public sign up to speak. Want to close public comment, and adjourn this meeting at 9:45 PM. Thank you.